I'm just watching the clock. It is now six thirty and we will call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Malzahn?
Here.
Van Kampen?
Here.
Schnelly?
Here.
Dana?
Here.
Mar?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Polda?
Here.
Majewski?
Here.
And Smithback is out tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next item is approval minutes of August third, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion to approve?
Someone's second.
Motion we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed motion carries. Moving on to public appearances. First item is community input. In this part, we have anybody is allowed to address the board with anything that's either on or off the agenda. We ask you to hold it to three minutes. Is there anybody who wants to do it at this time? Yes, sir. You can, it's either on or off the agenda. If it's on the agenda, you can also address us at that time. Okay, that'd be fine. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna move on to communication with business. There's none. Unfinished business, there's none. New business, public hearing regarding the zoning map amendment for parcel number zero four two slash, zero four two print one. Should've brought the glasses. Zero five zero nine dash one three one dash nine seven two one dash one. Autumn Ridge, phase three. Excuse me.
I'm going to be recusing and abstaining on this item and stepping away from the table. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this point then we'll open the public hearing. Staff reports, please.
Thanks, Greg. All right, so this should look familiar to most of you. We've been talking about Autumn Ridge Phase Three for probably close to a year now. We are rounding the horn to some of the final approvals. Have kind of final drafts of the annexation ordinance, which is actually the mechanism to annex Phase Three. An annexation agreement, which kind of lays out some of the fees that would be paid at the time of annexation, as well as the development agreement, all set to go hopefully to the September eighteenth Village Board meeting. So these obviously are approvals that are contingent on that annexation. So a little bit preceding that, but they'll kind of hang in the wings until we're ready to go with the Village Board. So this first item is the zoning change and there's a concept plan. I think on the second page, third page of the memo. There we go. So you can see, so Phase Three A would be zoned with SR four, single family lots. The TR six duplex lots, that's in orange, and then some of the stormwater lots, that's all gonna be as rural holding, which is kind of our outlot, stormwater, green space, land use. Phase Three B would be final platted in the future and that would just remain as unplatted lands until the time of Three B comes ahead. So this is consistent with our comprehensive plan showing residential use over there. Anticipated that these areas would be coming into the village, so Phase Three has always been anticipated for residential. I think we did do a comp plan amendment, though, within the last year over there. So again, zoning is really just for Phase Three. Phase, all of Phase Three would be annexed, should all this move forward. But again, Phase Three A would be construction probably starting later this year on site work, with homes starting to go up next year, just on that kind of north-south cul-de-sac. So the contingencies I have here are all of the annexation-related items that I mentioned before. So the annexation ordinance agreement and development agreement by the board. I guess I'll also just mention, we have, obviously, the final plat is the next agenda item. Did hear from our engineer today, they have no concerns with the final plat. There are a couple minor stormwater items that are still being, you know, kind of finalized with Bruce Haller, the developer's engineer. And we are moving through the CARPSY process to expand our urban service area. That's the area where we're allowed to provide public water and sewer by the Regional Planning Commission. We had a public hearing for that in, earlier in August, and then we have a final vote by CARPSY. It'll be next Thursday, a week from today. But so far, all those meetings have gone well. We didn't have anybody from the public speak at the public hearing. But we've been working with their staff and I believe they'll be recommending approval. And we did have a Town of Oregon Planning Commission meeting we attended in, I think, late July. And no, there was one comment from the public, more about a, a comment about a park that was in the area, but kind of addressed the concern about just offsite stormwater flow and how that's kind of being handled. So more disprocess questions from their planning commission, but Town of Oregon has been kept in the loop here. But yeah, happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Anybody have any questions at this point?
I do, but do we want to?
We'll wait till later. We'll wait till later, yes. Okay, that's it then. Jeff, you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Then we'll open up to public comments. We ask you, please, if you'd come up to the, to the microphone and then just simply state your name and your address and let us know what you want to talk about.
And just go ahead and pull the microphone close to you there.
Close you can get it.
You can pull the whole thing closer. There you go.
It doesn't work, it's his fault.
Good. Good evening. I'm Alan Schwartzstein. I live at nine twenty-nine Harding Street, which if they pull the map back up, is the fourth house in on the town side of the land. It's the one that's sort of, yeah, that's it right there. Very good. Thank you. My wife and I have a few concerns about this that I'm hoping you'll be able to help us with. First of all, the map that we got from the town or the village, I think it was the village, because Elise, I think it was yourself, it appeared different to us. The last map that we saw was one that looked like it was gonna be a soccer field across from us. And now it looks like there's gonna be housing. Question about that. Second one is, and I think Elise might have referred to this, is our house is at the bottom of Harding Street. Once you get around the corner away from the development you're talking about, it comes, all the water comes downhill to us. So there are times when we have more rain than we did this summer, or when we have more snow than we did last winter, when our front yard becomes a lake or a pond, depending upon how much. And it all settles down at the bottom in the corner right there, which is right across from, exactly, right there. So it's a little concerning to us that you're planning on putting a bunch of houses on a hill right on the other side, because we prefer that our, you know, our property doesn't become half full with water for whatever portion of the year would be. The last concern is you're putting in houses there. I don't believe this is senior housing that I've understood, which means there's maybe kids living in those houses. Those kids are gonna go to the middle school and the intermediate school. There's gonna be, have to be some way for them to get across that road. I don't see anything in the plan there for there to be safe crossing, a light, a walkway, guards to help get the kids across the road safely. It's been a problem already, but now that you're talking about some number of other houses, that's right on MM. There's nothing there that really helps the kids out at all. That's all I have to offer. Thanks very much for your attention.
You bet. Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Lori Schwartzstein, ninety-nine Harding Street. My, my comments that I have is exactly what my husband said, but we also have a culvert right at that corner, at that part. And the water runs right across our Harding Street into the area that you are talking about as having the wastewater area. And we have lived there for thirty-four years. It is a flood plain in that area. And I understand that a lot of dirt has been put in there. And we are just waiting to see what's happening there. But the indentation for a culvert or for water drainage is very confusing, and I would like to have some clarification on that. They're talking about water being pumped up to someplace else, and I'm wondering if that is in Phase Three A that is being pumped up. We're talking, we're at the bottom of Harding Street, right there. We're at the bottom of that hill where M is. And that concerns me a great deal. Another comment that I have is that at the very top of the hill, where I don't know what the new road is called, Fairfield, that road?
Foxfield.
Foxfield, the one going across, that hill is atrocious in the wintertime, going on MM. And I don't know, is there gonna be a light there? Is there just gonna be stoplights, stop signs? Is it gonna be a cul-de-sac? Or not a cul-de-sac, a go-around?
Roundabout, yeah.
Roundabout? If it's a roundabout, that's gonna be dangerous going up and down the hill. We've lived there for thirty-four years. Every winter, there is always an accident on one side of that hill or the other. And that's a big concern. That's a major thoroughfare at this point, going from Brooklyn and Evansville and all other areas. And the school's right there. And I'm concerned about that. So I'd like to have some information on that.
We'll answer, yeah.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Brockman. I also live on Harding Street. I am at nine forty-five, so next door neighbor to the Schwartzsteins. My concern is an echo of what both Alan and Lori stated as far as the water plane. That culvert that Lori pointed out, not only does it come through the culvert, when it's heavy, it comes across the road too. That's how deep that gets. And it comes right into our front yard and then travels down to the Schwartzsteins and gets to their yard. Plans have changed several times. The different map we have here is very different than it was earlier this year. Very different than it was a year ago. So we don't know what to expect out of that. Another concern I have is more so for the developer. Already with the work that's going on, people have been, or not people, trucks have been parking on Harding Street. Getting in and out of my driveway has been impossible sometimes because that large truck is there. If there's an emergency further deep in the neighborhood, ambulances are not gonna get past that truck that's parked there during the day. I work from home. I see that. It's not just happening once or twice. It's been every day for a full week when they're working on that lot. So that's a big concern for safety as far as I'm concerned. Al pointed out the kids. I'm a runner. I try to run up that hill. It is impossible to get across double M. Children will not get across MM without security guards, without a crosswalk, without something that's helping them do that. And two doors down from us is a couple with two children who are under the age of eight. They're gonna be using that to get to school. What's gonna be done for their benefit? We all live in the Town of Oregon. That division is our street. So we don't know how we can speak for people on the Town of Oregon when it's the Village of Oregon that's doing all that. So that's the main reason I'm here today.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Johnson. I live on nine thirty Harding Street, so it's right on the corner of the other direction, as the curve, across from Lori and Alan.
Oh, over here, right? Okay, got it.
Exactly. So my yard butts up right to that. And there is a lot of work going on in there and, like they have, like all my neighbors have said, lots of plans have changed and, you know, a lot of things are, are going on. Now that they've got mounds of dirt and things are kind of moving around, we can kind of see what's kind of gonna be there. My biggest concern is since I'm on the end of everybody in that neighborhood, when the rain comes, as they all said, it can back up. Not only does it go in, you know, down the road on both sides through the cul-de-sacs, but it will cut through half of my yard and then it drains to that corner of that field. That's how it's always been set up. Now that they've got the big mounds of dirt in there and there's a bunch of weeds that kind of line up that corner, when it rains or when it snows, I'd like to know where all that water's gonna go. Because not only does my yard, the ones that kind of kitty-corner right behind me, yep, they all flood as well. And all three of our yards will flood. And it's supposed to go right into the field, right where that, where they're showing that, right there in that little area. But now that it's full of weeds and not far in, then there's a mound of dirt. Water doesn't go up and over a hill, so I'm wondering, where is all of that water gonna go? I mean, it just can't just sit there, you know, and as much rain, we, I mean, we didn't get a lot last year, but we got enough that it did back up into my garden, up into where my shed is. I mean, it comes all the way back up and it will cut across the street and they do have it on the other side. But my yard, because I'm right there on the corner, everything drains into that and goes up to the field. They are very accurate when they talk about that hill. I've lived there my whole life. Used to be my parents' house. Now I bought it from them. That hill is very dangerous in the wintertime. There are times you have to go around the block to get up that hill if it's icy. If they're stopping on that hill, they may not make it up the hill. They will probably slide backwards. It has happened to me. I have actually seen other people have that. So if they're gonna try to put in a stoplight in the middle of that hill where that new street comes across, it's concerning, you know, because there's nowhere for them to go if they go backwards or into other traffic. Again, you know, there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood if they're gonna be putting a bunch of new houses. You know, I understand people want to have a new home, great place to live, but you want to make sure that there's an easy access for kids to be able to cross that road. There's no way I would allow my kids to go up and down that road without supervision. I mean, even when, granted, my kids are older now, but when they were younger, even trying to walk on the opposite of the traffic flowing, you just, it's so much extra traffic now than it ever used to be. It is very dangerous. I do know that they put a sidewalk across the street that came down the hill a little bit, but it doesn't go all the way up and over to that school. And you still have to cross over the main road to get to that sidewalk. So, you know, just like my neighbors, we want to make sure that not only the safety of going up and down that hill, but there's an easy access for kids and stuff to cross it to get to that school or to wherever, you know, during bad storms or snow or rain or whatever. So, and again, you know, I'm really concerned about where all that, that water is gonna go once all those houses get put in there because not many things go up. They usually come down. And, you know, we're part of the, they've built this, the mound in that field. You can see like there's a mound in the middle and then there's a, an empty area, so you water kind of flowing between. And then there's another mound and then you'll kind of go over a little farther and that's where the gully kind of area is. But, you know, when all that starts filling up, it's not gonna go up and over to get into the next step. Where's it all going? Besides back into my yard and everybody else that lines up next to me. So, you know, I'm just kind of curious on, you know, water doesn't drain very fast or sink into ground very fast, especially in the winter. Just kind of wondering what I'm having to look forward to once all of those houses are put into place. So.
All right, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Lots of questions and, and great questions.
They are.
Let's talk, Elise and I will kind of split these up a little bit. Because, and, you know, we have the, the applicant here tonight and their engineer. I think, Glenn, you could probably affirm this, but I think the one thing I said right off the bat from day one was we're gonna have to solve stormwater over here. And we let them know right away that there were stormwater problems over here and that nothing would be allowed to get by us as staff until we were convinced that stormwater had been dealt with properly. I'm just gonna do a high level first. A lot of people think development actually adversely impacts stormwater runoff. And, and the truth of the matter is, is it actually with, with the requirements that we have for, for subdivision development actually causes a peak flow reduction in, in, in the stormwater off of those properties. In other words, we're now all of a sudden making them hold that water in ponds and then releasing it slowly over time. So you do see a dramatic decrease in the peak flows off the site. Now, there is additional stormwater because of pavement, rooftops, impervious areas, driveways, that type of thing. So that is also true. We knew when we, when the developer came through for Phase Two, which is this area I'm circling right here, we knew that stormwater was a concern. And, and stormwater was a concern from these residents that own over here, as well as we know that the water comes here, goes under culvert, under this private drive, then goes under MM, right here in a culvert south of Harding. That's, yes, exactly. And then, and then comes over here and then goes north again under Harding and out. And we also knew a couple things is, this is a town subdivision, so there's not curb and gutter. It's really just grass and ditch and a lot of culverts. And we know for a fact that this area back here is low and collects water and, and holds water. Okay? So one of the things, and Bruce, if I am wrong on any of this, correct me, because I don't want to get tarted and feathered six months from now. But one of the, one of the criteria for the design of the grading in this is to be able to maintain a drainage swale. Basically, a very shallow ditch that would convey water from here, kind of between the ponds and the property line, here and eventually out this corner, eventually through what is shown as Phase Five. So under the new design, the grades have been set and established so that this technically won't hold water for very long. It might during a, a very high intensity rainstorm where it just, I call them gully washers, where the water comes down, rushes there, and, I mean, we even have it in my backyard where I'll get a five to six, seven foot wide stream going through my backyard, but twenty minutes later, it's gone. Same kind of thing is here. So I don't believe, Bruce, we have elevation to be able to grade this out of here, correct?
Yeah, we have, yeah, we, we'll be cutting in that swell that you talked about.
Right. Right. Exactly. So, so it comes through here. Yeah, I'm sorry. This is Bruce Haller, the Denofri Ocotkey. And the engineer. And so that, in, in one sense, you know, the applicant's not necessarily required to make things better for something that's happened for many, many years. But we as engineers and planners want to kind of improve problems as things come along because we really only have one shot at this, right? You know, once, once the grading's being done right now. So one of the things we've required from day one is that, we, we call it bypass water. Water that's coming from the presidential streets of Fayette Heights subdivision. Water that would eventually come out of Phase Two, has always come out of here and out of these subdivisions, would have a undisturbed flow path around here and then eventually out through Phase Three B and about through Phase Five. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, Your Honor, yes, yeah. And so from that standpoint, how the stormwater works here is basically you have to think of this subdivision, the only impact this subdivision is gonna have is what, everything is coming down into these ponds that are ponds separate from the water that is coming off the Fayette Heights subdivision. And it's separate until it, it itself discharges into this swell. Okay? So stormwater up here comes into, you know, this will flow into a curb and gutter system, into a stormwater collection system, come down, is it come here first or here first, Bruce?
Down to the, down to the cul-de-sac.
This one. Okay, comes down to the cul-de-sac, flows into here. It goes through an infil, this is an infiltration pond, and then it goes into a settling pond, and then eventually will discharge right here. Okay, into that swell. Yes, right.
Is it gonna be pumped from there? Because that's uphill.
It's uphill now.
So that's all gonna be taken down to a level?
Yes, we'll be, we'll be shaping, reshaping the grade around that corner to lower it so that, so that the water will continue to flow. There's, there, there won't be any pumping in this area.
Are they cement ponds?
No, no.
They'll be natural grass?
Grass, grass sides and...
Yeah, similar to what's across on, on Phase Two. I don't know if that's grown in much yet, but...
Yeah, it has. If, if you see what's over here, this is, we have, we have two features over here now. We have this brand new, this is called Gary Dish Park, and that's coming in really nicely. And, and then we have this is all the stormwater at, at this location here. And you can see right here, there are, there's actually two ponds. This first pond is a... That's your wet pond, correct? And then goes into a large infiltration basin. If, if, if the water going in there exceeds the amount of infiltration that this can handle, it comes out of an outlet structure and then into the ditch and then down through here and out. But I don't believe we've...
That just sends more water. It doesn't filter it. It sends, directs it directly to the houses that live on Harding Street.
It, it's greatly reduced peak flow than it ever was. In fact, I don't think there has been a runoff event that's come off of this yet.
That's because we've been in a drought for the last...
We've had some pretty good storms still go through.
Winters that have provided a lot of ice.
Sure, sure.
That melts in the water.
Yeah, I'm not gonna argue with you over it, but I'm, I'm just gonna say, you know, from the standpoint of stormwater engineering and stormwater management, you know, this, what is being contained and treated over here is a far improvement than a bare field that was there before.
Far improvement for where?
For everything downstream there. Yeah. I'm, are you, are you okay with me answering questions like this?
As long as we, as long as we all have a nice and, yeah, friendly.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, does anyone here play golf in the Cubs room?
I have. Probably not.
So, holes five and six, hole four, five, I think those are Phase Four and Phase Three B. And those are on a hill.
Correct.
You can't see over the hill when you go either direction on the road. So if that's up at the hill, up that way, how is the flow of Three A that you're talking about gonna go level?
It, it, this is all really low through here. This, this is not on the hill. Yeah, let me pull up.
You gotta...
Train's on the, on the east side of hole number four, green, into the, right next to the driving.
This one's not...
Okay.
The flow stays the same.
I need to go here.
With that hole five goes directly.
Correct, correct.
To the green and then hole ten.
It all goes right to the corner of Farm Field, right next to hole number four is green, which is low, there's a green swell right through.
Yeah, so now we can zoom in on this here.
Four is a par three.
Oh, I hate that. How do we get, okay. Sorry for my large icons. We won't mess with that right now. But this is right here, what is Phase Three. Three A is kind of where I'm pointing my cursor. Three B is here. Currently, what happens when we get large rain events, and we've had a lot of large rain events over the last, well, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. Last year has been blissfully dry, which is nice. But when we get large rain events, all of this subdivision drains down to this whole area. Okay? And currently, there is a, this is what we would call a kettle, which means it really can't drain right now. Okay? Because this is a little bit higher. We're talking a couple feet higher, I think, Bruce? Six feet?
No, no. I, I think, I think it ultimately, based on the grades that we've shot, it ultimately goes that way. There is no rise.
Okay.
It's just, it's just so flat that it might, it may appear.
Might just appear, okay. And so, and so what'll happen is, is Phase Three involves a cul-de-sac down here and I think eventually connection, but involves culverts down here that will go... Um, and I think eventually connection, but, uh, cut, involves culverts down here that will go under a proposed road. But in the meantime, that'll be graded so that it can go out here. And then this is, this is the driving range area back here, as well as a couple of holes back here. Eventually it all goes here to where it goes under the, well, would be under fourteen right away. Out here, the highway fourteen right away, if you've, I think there's a T-box kind of back there, isn't there? Yeah, and so, um, the hill that you're talking about where those holes are, are up here, and that's part of phase four. As, and phase four is, they could only do that as if they reconfigure the golf course to the twelve hole course like they've proposed. But we're not talking about four or five here tonight, but. So from a stormwater standpoint, we have very tightly reviewed this because we know we have to get it right. We know that the developer and the design engineer has to get it right. Um, I've had our village engineer looking at it. We've had our village engineering consultants looking at it. Um, I've reviewed it. Um, from a, from a stormwater standpoint, we've really asked them to jump through a lot of hoops. And, and we've asked them to do that because we know that you're concerned and we're concerned as well.
Yeah, I'll take some of the other questions. So, um, one, couple of questions. We're about to some of the changes that have happened over the last few years. Um, so in, I think, starting maybe twenty twenty and then twenty twenty-one, um, the developer was looking at doing both phase two across the street and phase three at the same time. And we had started moving through some of the approvals for both phases at the same time. And, uh, we had a, uh, actually, I think a town either board or planning commission meeting with a lot of these same concerns brought up. And, um, after that, we kind of regrouped and, um, developer decided to just kind of break this off and do a piece, piecemeal approach. So at that time, the, the park space, um, that's now in phase two had, was, uh, a fair bit smaller. And then there was also a park at the end of that cul-de-sac in phase three. And, um, part of the reason for that park to go away was, um, misunderstanding that we were going to do phase two kind of sooner and, and again, on its own. So that park got larger, uh, was also based on some feedback from the village that we were looking for larger playing fields and be able to have kind of a more usable space of a larger, um, playing field there. Um, they actually combined the land dedication requirements for parks, both in phase one, two, and, uh, the majority of three into that Gary Dish Park in phase two. So that rearrangement happened when the, these two phases were kind of broken off. So phase three does not have its own park, but, um, this whole series of phases, phase three, four and five, um, would eventually be served by that large park that's in phase five there, shown kind of just south of that large pond. Um, so that was kind of one major change, probably if you were around and pay attention to some of those maps in twenty twenty-one, that's, um, that original version. And then, um, last October, I think we had a, a pretty full neighborhood meeting, uh, in the old village hall in the boardroom, and so we introduced the, the twelve hole concept that Glenn has shared. Um, and I think at that time, that was still, that larger pond at the south end of that cul-de-sac was still there. Um, but as the stormwater review has been happening, um, and just kind of trying to, um, identify the best spots for those ponds to go, there was a shifting of the ponds to the east. And so the cul-de-sac, um, was extended and then some of that land was kind of just easily rearranged to be able to, um, really optimize the location for those ponds. Um, so that's sort of the reason for the changes. And then also, you may have seen, we had a preliminary plat submitted earlier in the year. I think probably January, February, we, February, we reviewed that. Um, and that included all of phase three, so phase three A, three B. So it showed all of the planned single family and two-family lots there. Um, but since that time, the developer said, we'd just like to plot phase three A is now. So phase three will just, three B would be probably farmed and some, some areas would be storm water too. Um, but they'll just remain as unplatted lands within the village until they come forward with three B. Uh, I think the other main question was about traffic and traffic controls. Maybe we can talk about the study that was done and then kind of our long-term plans for MM.
Right, so county highway MM, also known as Wolf Street in the village, um, is still a Dane County highway. So it's still under Dane County Highway jurisdiction. They maintain it all the way from Quick Trip all the way south. And, um, which is why it's been, I think, challenging when we look at, um, access for children, access for sidewalks and that type of thing. Trust me, it, it's one of our concerns too. I think when the subdivision was put in over here, um, you know, there was a thought, well, hopefully when the county does the highway, you know, it'll improve. We are much closer to than that we have ever been. Um, in fact, we will either be doing county highway MM or finishing the rest of Jefferson Street likely in two years. And then I think two years after that, be doing the other of the two. So in the period probably of five years, we will see a reconstruction of Wolf Street from Quick Trip all the way to our southern boundary, which with this annexation would be to right where I'm placing the cursor, just to Harding Street. I could see them continuing it, the county agreeing to continuing it to at least Harding Street. What that would mean would be, that would be curb gutter sidewalk, and hopefully if we can fit it, a path, okay? I'm a little up, little, I'm not optimistic on the path, but that's something we'd always, we always try to do if we can in this type of situation. I was talking with the Dane County, one of the Dane County, um, deputy directors the other day. And, um, we're talking about Foxfield Road. And, um, we did do it, we had a engineer do a traffic study. Um, with the addition of this, traffic does not warrant a, a signal yet there, um, for traffic. It's just, it really comes down to the number of trips, traffic counts, accident history, all of that type of thing. Um, and, and it does not warrant a, a signal at this location. Um, you remember we lowered the speed through there and that helps with site distances and everything like that. But according to talking to Dane County last week, um, the feeling is, is probably that we might have to lower the grade somewhat through there, um, when that is reconstructed. Which makes it a more expensive project, but also hopefully gives us a road that's going to last for many, many, many years. So yes, we are looking at that. Um, what we will likely see when we reconstruct this roadway, obviously curb gutter sidewalk, new roadway, possibly a signal here, we'll have to evaluate that at the time. Likely a roundabout at, um, Pleasant Oak down where, roundabout or signals. I tend to favor signals for, for children's safety rather than roundabouts. Um, and, 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 you know, hopefully be able to create that pathway, a safer pathway for children. And I mean, adults, runners, everyone to, and bicycl- bicyclists and everything to be able to get there. Um, I don't, I agree, it's not a safe place to run, it's not a space, safe place to bike, um, or kids either. But, uh, we are also working with Glenn as the owner. Um, there is a tunnel currently under the, um, highway. And Glenn has, um, offered that, you know, maybe that's something, uh, in the future, the village would take over after, I think there's some repairs that have to get done. But maybe the village would take over the, a long-term maintenance and that. And then that would allow at least a path for children to go under that. Um, it wouldn't help for three A, but when we do th- uh, three B and four, that gives them a safe connection up to there. But we still have to get a sidewalk then along past the insurance companies and everything like that. Um, boiling it down, we're working on it. Um, it's a long process, it's a very expensive process, and we don't own it yet. So until we can, um, and Dane County's fantastic to work with, but, um, it's just working through the schedule of this jurisdictional transfer of the highways. And we've done three of them now. We're working on Jamesville now, if you've tried to get through the village. Um, well, you probably did if you came from, came from Fay Heights neighborhood. But, uh, that's, that one project we're working with the county now. When they're done with that, they'll transfer that to us. That'll be a village roadway then. We'll do the exact same with Wolf Street and, uh, the rest of Jefferson as well in the future. So, um, it is being worked on. It's just, I've learned in this position and in this world, Greg, you've been here for very long. It, we've been talking about these kind of things for a very, very long time, having your tenure here and stuff, so.
My tenure's pretty long.
You have three tenures. So did that answer most of the questions, I think that?
I think, yeah, the only other one was about, um, the trucks on Harding. Maybe y'all can just speak to some of the, um, the grading that's been happening out there, some of the work and obviously kind of long-term, I imagine that'll be. Glenn, can you come up to the microphone too and just introduce yourself so everyone else can hear you?
Yes, I'll, I'll talk to my contractor tomorrow. We got a, uh, through Dane County, an early disturbance permit because we're short of dirt out there. And my contractor had excess dirt on a, a DOT job. So he, he's moving, there's plenty of space for him to park on my land. I really don't understand why he's parking on Harding Street, but I will be talking to him first thing in the morning about that. And, and, um, he's going to get convinced never to park there again.
Thanks.
Now, you guys, so what's happening is that they're using his property to just, just discharge, to drop some dirt. There's no actual excavation or anything going on on the, on the, on the site, is that correct?
No, there, there is dirt being placed there, because we're, we're short like ninety thousand yards. But it, yeah, it's being.
Should we be doing anything on that site until there's all these approvals?
It's.
Town property.
It's town property.
That's true, it is, it is.
It's one of those type of things, and, uh, you have, you have erosion control in place. Correct.
It's obviously, you know, the developer's risk to start moving dirt and, and putting work in a project before all the approvals are in place. But that's something that they're aware of.
And if it doesn't get approved, I'll just, my farmer will plant the corn at a higher elevation.
It'd be very interesting to harvest.
Yeah, I think those were all the, the questions that I wrote down. Did it address most of your concerns there?
They've only done the design for three A and three B. They'll be required to do the exact same design and proof to us for four and five. Um, I think one of the things that has, Bruce, as a consulting engineer, I was a consulting engineer for almost twenty years. Um, you know, you have to go through the same hoops all the time. And, uh, that's why you can see here, they've got very large ponds that will be constructed to be able to handle that storm water that comes this direction and is channeled off to here and then out, out into a drainage way out there.
Last thing. You know that MM is not all on that though right now.
You mean, it's just rough?
Yes.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, that's, um, and that's Dane County. I saw Dane County actually out doing wedging last week or something, the week before, I noticed even as I come into town. But, yeah, that's. I don't know. I mean, again, it's, it's a. Yeah. Yeah.
In and out of the, uh, in and out of the issue.
Yeah, you, when you're talking to your contractor, I, I, I've heard a complaint or so on that as well.
You need to get, yeah, you need to get a.
Some of the mats to get some of that mud out. But, okay, I guess we can.
That shouldn't be occurring. You should not have any mud, mud on the road at all.
Correct.
We'll turn it back to you guys for further questions and discussion, but thanks for letting us jump in there.
Okay, anybody, any comments, questions? You, yes, go ahead.
Two questions, um, Jeff, I think for you or the engineer. The retention ponds, I imagine have a life, li- lifetime to them, or they're going to fill up at some point?
They silt in, yes.
They silt in, okay. And who's responsible for dredging? I'm assuming they have to be dredged at a certain period. What kind of interval and who's responsible for that?
The village is responsible for that. Um, that's part of the, what we have to do with all the subdivisions. The only exception to those are on, um, areas that have private ponds. Um, and that, some of those are bergamot, I think, you know, but most of them, including the pond right out here and everything else are, are responsibility. And we've not done historically, at least in my time here and before then, we've never done any dredging. Um, except on one pond I can think of, so. Uh, but we're, I'm working with Lauren on a plan where we can start to knock off a few ponds every year to, to dredge those and, and remove them. But these won't need to be, a, a couple of things happen when, when a construction like this happens is, first off, there's a design that they have to obviously build these to. Um, and then their engineer, well, your surveyors will go out after construction to verify and shoot all the points to make sure that things have been constructed as they're supposed to, and then they submit that to us. They then have to maintain that pond for a period of five to ten years as the subdivision fills in with, uh, homes. Okay, and, um, wh- what, I think, is it eighty percent? I think it's, it's in our development agreement, when eighty percent of the homes have been built, then Glenn can come to us, the village, and say, I'm ready now to turn that pond over to the village as a responsibility. Okay, and we'll, we'll come back to Glenn and say, well, Glenn, you have to go out and survey those ponds again and the bottom of the ponds to show that they still have the same amount of storage. And, and if they don't, then he has to go out and dredge them, survey them again, and then prove to the village that they are still kind of almost like new condition, okay? And then, um, only then will the village board after staff approval or after staff recommendation, accept those ponds. But then after we accept the ponds, they're public property, so they're just like a park or anything else. We have to maintain those and take care of those.
Okay, second question is, um, I totally agree with the public comments about crossing MM. I cross at Foxfield once a week on a bike, and it's scarier than, you know what? I would know, I would never let a kid cross that street. So my question is, is it possible, the, the issue there is Foxfield is not at the apex or top of the hill. Is it possible to put a temporary crossing a little north with, um, you know, push a button, crosswalk, so that kids can safely cross and cars can see the flashing lights, just like we have downtown Oregon? I know it's, there's an expense, but.
Not that, it's not a road.
Yes, that, that, I think that's the main issue there is, is not a road. We can't, I mean, that is something we can consider. Um, that would scare the heck out of me still, uh, as far as, here's the problem. People still, and don't, there, there's the flashing lights, and I mean, they are bright, bright flashing lights. And there can be someone literally standing three feet into the intersection, and there's still cars flying through. Um, I had a situation last week where I was coming off of Market Street, right there down near the back corner of the Catholic church. And I stopped and there were two, uh, young girls waiting to cross with their bikes. There were, I counted like ten cars go by, and, and no one stopped, no one stopped, no one stopped. And I was getting kind of mad, so I turned on my lights. And finally a gentleman stopped, but stopped way back from there. And I actually kind of pulled up next to him after the young girls had gotten across the street. I rolled down my window and I said, thank you, you're the only one out of ten people that stopped. And it's just, people don't follow those kind of, they, they don't observe people in crosswalks, even when the flashers are out there. It is a possibility that we could do something out there. I just don't, the thing that scares me sometimes is people think, I pushed a button, the lights are on, I can just go across. And, um, that, that can be pretty dangerous, because I think the residents here can attest that even though the speed is thirty-five through there, I think it goes forty-five right at Foxfield.
Forty-five and it stops, it stops right at Harding.
At Harding goes to fifty-five, yes, so that's all.
Forty-five, south.
Forty-five, is it?
It goes to forty-five when you're going toward Brooklyn.
Yeah.
Thirty-five is you're going up the hill.
Right, 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 so it's thirty-five through Foxfield. But it's, uh, you know, human nature is people want to go fast out there, so. But we'd sure look into it.
And sometimes that's super.
Yeah.
Would Dane County be open to, to discussing that with you, you think, on the road?
Yeah.
Okay. There might be some other things that they can suggest, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have a, Glenn, forgive me here, I've tried to remember, do we have a sidewalk along this back?
Of the park?
Yes, and we're going to have it all the way to.
We have it on the tar side, but, but. We have it on the tar side, but but.
Yes, it's gonna be on the highway side.
Yeah, so we'll have a sidewalk back along here.
Yeah, correct.
On both sides of the double M?
Yes. Okay, that's. No, there's not a, right, it it it's a sidewalk to nowhere. Yep, that's typical and typical in development work, and when when other previous developers didn't do that or weren't made to do that, we're, then we're left to either go in and um condemn property or get access easements and everything like that. And that probably was what we'll, what we will do when we have to redo the highway.
What are you talking about, Jeff?
Sidewalk on the west side.
Sidewalk on the west side, okay.
Sidewalk, yeah, there's already a sidewalk on the west side over along the park and everything that goes all the way down to here or here.
But down past the um number.
The pond.
Across the first, the first uh, the first hole on the west side.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalk on that side.
Oh, no, no, way down there, no, 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 we're, this is, this is along here, but they'll have sidewalk along this side here as well. And it's it's what we do, obviously, when developers come in, we have, we have them put in and pay for a sidewalk, and we have to work towards making those connections, bike paths do the same thing sometimes, so.
Okay. And else?
So I remember when this came through preliminarily some time ago, and we sent, you guys left with with the sort of, there's a whole lot of hurdles that have to be jumped through story, township stuff, village stuff, whatever, multiple townships, I think even. And we have just had a project that we kind of put on hold because of access onto a town private drive. And I don't want to, I don't, don't want to set up a case where we are proposing stormwater going through a town when it's something that's outside of our jurisdiction like that would have been, if that makes sense. I wa- I want to make sure that we are approving a project that we can approve because it's in the village of Oregon.
And you're you're referring to the stormwater flow and then the sanitary sewer and water main, that would be a easement across phase five?
I'm I'm making a, I'm I'm making a argument or a conversation based on another project and tying it in with this one. And I just don't want to approve a project that shouldn't have been approved because it's outside our jurisdiction.
And your his point about this, the stormwater, because the stormwater will be exiting the village.
Where it does now.
Where it does now.
Where it does now.
But now it's gonna be maybe more of a flow or more directed flow or whatever it may be.
Less, no, uh lower intensity, higher volume over time.
Yeah.
Uh but a much, much, much longer time. So let's talk about that part of, part of this development, part of three A development is the construction of sanitary sewer up to this point, correct, Bruce?
Yes, to the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, to the end of the cul-de-sac, and then that that flows in a gravity pipeline that goes through here, goes through phase five fut- future. It'll go through the middle of the golf course. Glenn is the owner of the golf course in easements. And uh in easements, that'll be granted to the village. And then gravity here to where it meets a uh sanitary manhole right here. We're also requiring that they connect to the water from this point all the way along here, all the way over to here as well. Or to make that connection actually up to here. What that is also doing is providing us a looped system, which we don't have right now. Um maybe six years ago, this house nearly burned to the ground. And, you know, quite honestly, it's a very um hard area of the village for us to get water to. And you want looped systems, so you have water coming from multiple directions in your distribution network. Um and you get much better pressures and much better flows, and we just don't have that, again, because of things that have happened in the past. It is not unusual and it is allowed um for us to have easements and have things that are owned by the village on town property, okay? We have um Burke City, uh village, not village, the development of Bergamot goes through Phil Peterson's property with a a sanitary um has has for the last seventeen, eighteen years. Our rotary bike trail, which is owned and maintained by the village, is three and a half miles through um town of Oregon property. And I'm trying to think if we have any other. We have some easements already on the golf course um on that side over there that are part of the stormwater system. And I think you talked to Matt too, did you? Matt Drayney?
Yeah.
About that, so, yeah, so um as long as we have easements to be able to get in and maintain, it's not been a concern from staff, at least for for that type of thing, and and it's different because I I know you're talking about the North Point or the uh.
Yes.
Regency.
The app, the app property over there. So that's a whole different situation in as much as um that's an agreement that really needs some legal minds to wrangle out.
I understand that, I just don't want to be creating a slippery slope of approving something that could set us up for down the road, a bad situation.
Right, well, it sounds like maybe handling utilities across multiple municipalities is different than, I mean, in that case, we were worried that we don't want to approve a project where we we're not ass- assured that village residents would have access to a public road to get out and get in and out of their homes, so. Multiple layers going on with that, but yeah, I think the precedent that's been sent in some of these other projects and obviously, it's convenient that Glenn's the downstream landowner here and is saying that, yep, I'm happy to take the, you know, outflow from phase three across the um golf course, and you know, it's up to me to maintain these ponds if I want to keep these holes usable. Um obviously, when we get to phase five, that'll kind of all have a path and that'll all be in the village. But I think as an interim plan, obviously, we've, we've talked about this probably a year and a half now at a staff level and you know, we made our recommendations, ultimately, this is kind of, this piecemeal approach is what the developer has proposed, so we've tried to make the best of it and say that these are the, you know, easement documents we want to see, this is what we need to have in the agreement, this is what we're gonna hold you to for stormwater requirements if you want to do it in this piecemeal approach, so I think Glenn stepped up to the plate and answered, um you know, our questions and concerns. Well, yeah, certainly not an ideal situation, but I think it's it's kind of apples and oranges with that regency project in terms of the different municipal questions that were at play.
And then also, the the plan at, the original plan for phase three was that there was going to be a sanitary pump station that would be dedicated to the village, built by the developer and dedicated to the village either down here or down here at the cul-de-sac, correct, Glenn? And um that's probably where the, where you guys have heard things get pumped and um we, if we can get away without adding a pump, a sewage lift station, that's just, that's cheaper for the village in the long run. It's less maintenance, less cost and everything like that, so um that's why we've, we've kind of supported the idea of being able to maintain uh gravity sanitary sewer through this location. And then, like I said, the addition of the the looped water main, I cannot under- understate enough or overstate enough that it is huge for us to be able to get that.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
And and I can appreciate that. My other questions, and I'm not sure, because this is where it gets a little fuzzy between the zoning map and um and the uh the final plat. Um some of my questions, I don't know which end of the spectrum it's gonna fall under, so I'm gonna just throw them out there, and if it's not right, just tell me wait. Is there, uh I didn't see anything for, we've run into it on on past projects for mailboxes. Is there a uh easement or an area for mailboxes for this part of the development?
Yeah.
Um because I didn't see one on the plat, or maybe I missed it.
We had a um carved out a little outlot down the s- on the on uh Autumn Ridge.
So you gotta go across the street to get your.
No, you've, it's down, it was in, um it's, it was in between lots eighty five and eighty-six, I thought, yeah.
I'm not seeing it now.
Yeah, I haven't seen it on this.
Yeah, maybe I don't have the, I don't know um what the date is here on this sheet. This is the one you submitted to me, I think, late June?
I printed one out that I have that has the latest on it. It's a similar to phase two across the street, it's got a an outlot between eighty-four and eighty-five that we uh, a twelve foot by twenty foot rectangle.
So we could just make that a condition of approval, it's just something that I saw.
Yep.
Good catch.
The um, I know that, and again, I'm just in my back of my mind, I'm thinking about the other projects that that we have um sort of set precedence on. And staff is comfortable approving this portion of the project, knowing that the overall layout um of the work is, they're comfortable with that. Where I'm going with that is I know that on the north side of town, on the property that was taken by, taken over by Veridian, we made that developer show us that the, instead of doing it piecemeal, that there was an overall concept for the plan. It never moved forward and it was adjusted, but I just want to make sure that that you are comfortable with the overall concept of this development um for this phase to move forward.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and and keeping, Veridian platted the entire parcel.
Yes, they did.
They did, but previous to that, the other developer was piecemeal.
Oh, I, oh, it was, that was the definition of piecemeal.
Yes.
Um and that's why, yeah, so the the green to preserve is totally platted.
Yes.
I will say this, and I know I said this to, I think Glenn, when he came in, um kind of with this, it it was, you first had done, had kind of proposed three, pulled back on it, and then you purchased the golf course. And that's when he came back to us with this concept of three, four and five. And I looked at it and I think I told him at the time, I said, I looked at it and I said, this makes so much more sense. It maintains the golf course, it it maintains all the private homes that currently have golf course frontage, still had golf course frontage. It um and it's, you know, a not a super high density, which was good. It it answers a lot of problems that we've been dealing with for a lot of years, I think, so. Yeah, we've been supportive of it. I know I sound like a cheerleader for it tonight, but um I know that they've gone through a lot of iterations to get to where we even are today.
Last question I've gotten, it uh maybe I'm just not feeling it on this, uh it seems really light on information for a final plat.
Terms of number of pages?
Yeah, I mean, for, I understand that it's not coming in with all of the phases, but really, all that we've got is meets and bounds for the development and um not a lot of other information regarding, usually, we've got some stormwater, some detail sheets, some something. And I don't know if, I don't know if, maybe I'm just overthinking this, or am I wrong?
Yeah, I think the reason, I mean, this looks really small in terms of number of sheets compared to like the Veridian neighborhood that we just looked at was so large, multiple pages there. Um the reason I didn't include the stormwater plan is because it's still kind of in its final iteration and um Lauren and Brian, our engineers, are still um kind of going through their their final level of review with Bruce, so I didn't want to include something that um doesn't have their final sign off yet.
But typically, don't we have that?
We do have it, yeah, um obviously, this is something that you all approve, but yes, typically, something we have um by this stage.
Yeah, because it 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 goes back to um, sorry, you're up to take your tongue here, but it goes back to past, our past precedents, what we've done in the past. And and we've got, finally got this thing to the point, or this planning commission to the point where we move on things when we have the information we need. And we don't do a lot of contingencies, because that leads to some issues, possibly, not always, but possibly. So I think that's where maybe John is mentioning, you know, it'd be kind of nice to have some more of this information. I I don't doubt it's coming, I understand that. But again, then we're changing our precedent uh by proceeding without having that information.
What contingencies um are you concerned with?
Annexation agreement, stormwater, and all the things that are listed on here. I I understand that, but I'm saying, what what we're doing now is we're gonna be absolutely going against what we've been preaching for years, and I've been here for years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I have. That is a problem in my mind. Now, the rest of the folks, maybe they don't care, but I do.
And as I mentioned, right now, um you know, we're kind of, I think there's just a couple um minor changes we're making with the lawyers to the annexation agreement, development agreement. Um we've been probably looking at that for a couple of months with them, so that's still lined up for the September eighteenth meeting, so um you know, if you all felt more comfortable, we can certainly annex unplatted lands. Um we do have a planning commission meeting in October, early October, um so I think.
So you'd be, okay, so you're suggesting we go through with it now with the annexation, or?
Annexation is a board level decision. We, we can either, you know, make a recommendation to the village, where you all can make a recommendation to the village board now, and it hangs out in the wings until that annexation ordinance is adopted by the village. That would be the first item on the agenda, the agreement, the development agreement, and then zoning request, final plat. Um I don't even think the the village board doesn't approve stormwater plans, it's just a staff level.
We're sitting here with a review and possible recommendation to village board for a final plat of Autumn Ridge Phase Three A.
Right, and the zoning.
That's all the stating, so there's nothing, yeah.
And the zoning request, yeah.
So, well, there's no zoning request here, I stated.
Yep, this is ZMA, yep, that's, that's the a dead item we're on.
Okay, good sort of recommendation, sorry, got me on that one.
We're still on the first one, yep, so um it's up to you all, you know, we've talked about with other projects kind of doing this, where there's approvals and knowing that that things are waiting in the wings until the the board steps are ready, but if you would prefer to wait, I don't think it's gonna significantly impact the, you know, the timeline of this project. CARPSY approval, like I said, that's supposed to be next Thursday is their meeting.
Well, I just, I'm just waiting for next spring, once another developer comes in and says, oh, well, we had a, you got a, gave a a condition, or not condition, you have a just conditions that you gave to somebody else to get approval, and then they want the same thing, and I don't want to deal with that. But again, the rest of the folks can differ with me, I don't care, but that's the way I look at it.
I'm a little concerned that the actual final plat maybe isn't the one that's in our packet here either, because it doesn't show the mail, cluster mailbox outlot on there. Um and then there's, there's a page here kind of showing exhibit B, I guess, it says uh what's being annexed. My question was, are we just annexing land for three A and three B, we're leaving and islanding phase four still in the township?
Yep, so just to clarify, yeah, planning commission doesn't vote on annexation, but yeah, the village board would be looking at annexing the lands in phase three. Phase four is in town of Oregon.
No.
And phase five is town of Rutland.
Phase four will remain in the town of Oregon for the time being.
Correct, yep, so golf course, you know, all the holes is, they are, all eighteen of them would remain as is with both phase three and three B, but yeah, phase four would then be impacting the golf course too.
So that would be a separate annexation uh down the road. And then, can you define for me, because I couldn't tell from all these dotted lines and different colors, the urban service area, what are we petitioning for at this time?
So um phase four was actually already part of the urban service area, um so phase three and then also phase five were what was petitioned for to CARPSY, um because.
This will be the last entry to CARPSY for this development then, if it goes through?
Correct, yep, so, and they like to see um the full kind of concept plan, so we encourage the developer to submit for both, since it's pretty much just as much work for one as it is for two, um so that way they could kind of understand the system as it was, is designed to work as a whole.
Anybody else have any questions?
I made, I made three notes when I reviewed the packet. The first is why the rush to pre-approve? The second is why has earthwork already started without approval? And the third is concerns over safe crossing at Foxfield and MM. Uh I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse on this. I feel like it's being rushed. I appreciate uh as a former contractor myself, the need to get things going, I understand that. The last item is my biggest issue with this project.
I could not support it in good conscience if a kid got killed crossing the road. I'll throw out an idea, if the developer owns the golf course, why can a sidewalk not be put on the east side down to your tunnel so that they can safely cross under the tunnel? I know there's still easement issues with the insurance, you mentioned the insurance, you know, uh, businesses, but with all due respect, I, I don't mind your project, but I will not support it until there's safe passage across MM.
Concern maybe on there, and maybe Jeff can, um, there's probably, I don't know if there's a right-of-way or something by the, the town? I'm excuse, by the Dane County, would that be or not? Or is that property actually golf course property?
I think the difficulty comes in that what you're doing is you're taking on the liability of their, of a public walkway on a private piece of property.
That happens.
I know it does, and, but it is something that somebody has to have the stomach for, so, um.
And I know there's issues with grade, I mean, that's a challenging slope that you'd have to deal with, but I think it could be dealt with.
I think that in the short term, it could be a, it could be a gravel path. Until the final resolve, resolution is put in, but again, it's a question of, is the developer owner comfortable with the liability aspect? And that, we don't have, we don't, I don't think we have the authority to force that on him.
That's a decision the developer has to make.
Correct.
And, yeah, Jeff and I were just discussing, so, I know we're, whenever we've got two gen items for the same topic, we kind of muddle the discussion a little bit, which is fine. Um, I did talk to the, um, to our minister and our attorney just about kind of plat review versus zoning review, which are the two things on our agenda tonight. So there has been a preliminary plat submitted that was earlier this year, again, that showed kind of all the lots for Phase Three A and Three B. Um, the final plat has just Phase Three, and I agree that we should make sure we have the final version and make sure we have the, the changes with the cluster box and everything labeled. Um, but in terms of, you know, how you feel about the project and everything else, because we've already approved a preliminary plat, and this is still in keeping with the overall concept that was presented, even though it's just half of it, um, you know, I've, I would be fine if the developer is open to it, you know, let's wait till maybe October and make sure we get the, all the updates to the final plat, bring that back to you, but, um, we don't have the flexibility to deny a final plat just because of kind of peripheral items. Um, because we've already approved a preliminary plat, the final plat is just kind of a rubber stamp as long as it's, meets all of our requirements and it's keeping with the preliminary plat. Yep, um, zoning is definitely something that's still, you know, within your power to withhold or request changes. Um, we also have other tools, obviously, we don't, the village board isn't compelled to annex any property that they don't want to, so you can also pass forward recommendations to the village board that we'd like to see X, Y, Z considered, and we can incorporate those requests into an annexation agreement or the development agreement. The development agreement is just for the work in Phase Three A, um, the annexation agreements for all of that Phase Three area. Um, so those are some of the tools to kind of carry forward some of your requests, either through, you know, adding conditions to the zoning, it has to be, you know, related to the zoning request, or passing forward some recommendations by the board, but I don't think the plat step is where we legally can make, um, those conditions. It's, it's this other relative, yeah.
See, that, that's my sort of hangup, is I'm comfortable enough with the zoning. Um, there seems to be enough sort of information here and a clear enough process and approach and precedent set, um, but the plat is the thing that doesn't seem to be caught up in the information. So I would, I would be, my opinion is, I would be okay with the zoning, but not the final plat.
Okay. If we brought the final plat back again, um, with the updated changes and then also provided the stormwater management plan, I believe by that time, you know, it should have the final seal of approval from our engineers. Right, including that in the October packet, um, would you all feel more comfortable with that?
Will it also give the developer some time to think about Patrick Spencer?
Some of the other requests, yeah.
Yeah, uh, anybody else have any questions?
Sorry.
No, no, that's, I'm just gonna, just asking, I just, Jeff alluded to the fact that I've been around here for a little bit, so I was actually on the village board thirty-eight years ago, when Mr. Peterson, um, built this course. Um, and I, I distinct remember a, an agreement that was made between the village board and Mr. Peterson, and I, I don't remember the wording on it, and we don't seem to be able to find it, because I signed it along with the other members of the village board in reference to the property and what it'd be used for in the future, whether or not it was something just within the village or if it included the entire parcel of property. Then going the next step, previous owners of this part, of this, of this course, um, again, I was here on it when they came in and bought it from Mr. Peterson, and within a year, less than ten months, within ten months, they came into the plan commission, made a presentation that the course was not sustainable and that they wanted to develop the entire parcel. That didn't happen. So we have a new owner, nothing personal about it, okay. I'd like to have some clarification of what this place is, now, I'm not saying it has to be a golf course, but it's not gonna be developed in my mind, because we, we've maintained that position through the years. Is there something that, an agreement we can have, because is there a deed restriction we can have? Something we can have that tells us that it's either gonna be, what, just, it's not gonna be developed. It doesn't have to be a park, it doesn't have to be a golf course, it can, I don't care, but it's not gonna be developed with homes that are livable and sewered and watered. I'm just throwing it out there because unfortunately for you guys, I've been here a long time, so I've witnessed all this stuff.
Are you, Greg, are you talking about the existing eighteen, or are you talking about the remaining twelve after this development?
Well, we've already gone ahead, I, I have, I do have a problem with it, with, with the twelve, but again, we've gone through a preliminary.
Got to be careful too, as far as what we're covering under the, the.
I understand that, but I, I, I understand that, but it would be nothing more than there, I guess the existing, uh, it would be anything other than, and I, and I don't agree with losing the eighteen, but, okay, beyond that, anything other than what is presently pres- uh, presented as being developed through Phase Five. I'm making a, some kind of a.
Leap?
Not a leap.
So Greg, Greg and I talked about this a couple of days ago, um, and I spoke with Matt Dragning, our attorney, this afternoon about that too, um, and kind of ties back to my last comment. So, um, he didn't feel that a requirement for, he said, there's, there's a, there's a couple legal mechanisms that, um, you know, agreements that could be written to, to kind of, with the developer to craft language about describing the lands and, and what the possible uses could be, some kind of deed restriction or other type of agreement. Um, but he didn't feel that tying that requirement to a final plat is legal or for the zoning review is, um, a condition that kind of.
Or how about zoning?
Can be part of.
Excuse me, how about annexation?
Annexation, yes, so again, the village board has the tools with the annexation, well, adopting the annexation ordinance, and then within the annexation petition to require things that the planning commission cannot.
Okay, but that would be, my, my idea with is a, a deed restriction, that would be something to be transferable with the property, because the gentleman here may not own it forever, it's gonna go someplace else possibly. What about that, fella, and I'm not gonna be around to remember anymore at that point.
Right, so again, I think that's something you could recommend to the village board, but you as the planning commission can't require.
Okay, the, um, you know, I'm trying to remember, I don't remember who was on the village board back then. The only one I do remember is the village president was Bill Court, and I've talked to him about that, he does remember it also. But again, we did not have at that time the staff and the mechanisms we now have and the record-keeping, and it was almost pre-Cu Peter, not quite, but, um, so. That's my concern, I want to make sure that we know that this is it, and how do we do that? And that's my personal feeling, I don't know how a twelve-hole golf course is gonna go. That's not my concern, I shouldn't say it's not my concern, it shouldn't be our concern. Um, and we don't have anything to say about that. But I just wanna, I want to make sure that we don't deal with, or the village doesn't deal with this again, because I am gonna leave this commission sooner or later. All right, anybody else?
I do recall the meeting, uh, John and I know were on the board at the time, I don't know if Patrick was, uh, everybody that lived on that golf course was filling the room for that meeting. I mean, you know, they bought golf course property and somebody was threatening to dip the golf course away, and it was a very, uh.
Very, very intense meeting. Yeah, you're right, I'm sure most of us were there, yeah.
So the public hearing is still open?
Yes, it is.
Just to remind you.
Oh, no, I, I'm fully aware of that, so, I want to make sure that any other concerns or questions by the planning commission, because that's what's the last item in this thing before we do close. Anybody? And of course, make sure, anybody else have any comments or questions, some of the audience, we still make one more offer? Yes, sir? I'm sorry you had to come up, I'm, I'm sorry, you gotta come up, I'm sorry.
Ken, Julian, I'm not a little far in the course, but just wondering how you get Phase Three A completed? And you, because they don't have any sewer to take out past Phase Five. Crossing B or, Three B or five, does the sewer have to be totally connected before you actually buy Phase Three A?
Correct.
It will be.
It will be.
It will be, so you're gonna be plugging, punching through the golf course.
Correct, they, yeah.
And swales and everything in Phase Three A.
Correct.
You're gonna cut off both one, two, and three.
No, not, not initially, Ken, there, it's gonna be, Three A and Three B are not on the course. They're just to the south of the course. Then you're gonna go through, but there, I think Phase Four, you wouldn't be doing anything with a sewer at that point, would you?
Yeah, I think the pipes all go through Phase Five, and they would be undergrounded too, so those hole, there would be, you know, trenching to put the, the pipes in, but then they would be covered up and those holes would still be able to operate.
I want to finalize utility where it's the Phase Three A, but you could do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Now the other question, the dumb question, Three A, because we've worked on it for three months, piles of dirt in there forever, and it doesn't look anything like what the plat is. There's a lump of dirt while the house is.
The way it sounds is being stored and, um, but it's not our property and it's not within the village, so we can't say anything about it.
Yep, it's permitted through the town and the county.
Yeah.
So there's a big, big pile there that's going on for two and a half months.
But if there's any tracking, then they should have tracking pads or whatever to take care of this. You're right, thank you for that. It's the beauty of having different, or different, judging our different governmental agencies controlling errors, yeah. All right, anybody else, anything? Yes, sir? We didn't decide anything yet, we, we, okay, we have not decided anything yet. What we've done is still, we still have an open public hearing. Once we close the public hearing, then by golly, we're gonna make a decision on something. Yes, ma'am?
Just like, I want to be trying to understand about this. So all that dirt that is in Three A right now is just sitting there, so we're ready to, not wait, when the time is ready to build houses in that yellow section in Three A, I'm assuming all those ponds are in the houses. All that dirt in there is being removed and houses will be in there, or part of the dirt staying and I'm just trying to visualize and understand.
I haven't seen the grading plan, so I don't know.
Bruce, do you want to take that?
Yeah, so, so that's one of the reasons that we can get sewer that far, is in order for us to do that, we have to raise the grade higher, and that's what we're doing with the, with the material now, is, is it's within the yellow lots, we're raising those grades up and the houses will sit on that dirt, uh, that's out there now. Um, you know, and then ultimately, the hill that's up by the intersection of Foxfield there, that, that dirt comes down and gets filled in between what's there now and the road. So it'll kind of take shape, you know, as things move along, but the dirt that's there now falls within the building, it was, falls within the lots, um, on the east side of that cul-de-sac.
How much are you raising it up? See, I haven't seen any of that stuff, unless that was shown, I don't, was it shown, I don't think so. That's why we'd like to see more information.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, all of a sudden, there's some things being, I, I find out there's dirt out there, and I'm, why is that happening? Of course, now I'm, I'm reminded it's not in the village, so we have no way.
Right, but it sounds like there would be further, it's, it's gonna be stockpiled right now, but there'd be further, obviously, preliminary and final grading to move it to where it would eventually be.
Well, there's some, there's some reasoning behind where it's, where it's going right now, because we don't want to move it twice. So we're putting it in a spot that it'll ultimately just stay, so you don't have to, you know, dig around and move it and so.
But how, again, how much are we, are, are we changing the grade out there? How much are we changing the elevations?
Well, um, anywhere from, there, there are probably some fills that are twelve feet at, at the most, um.
Twelve feet, is this like across the street from these folks?
It's closer to thirty.
Well, that's, it's stockpiling, it's stockpiling, okay, so stockpiling is mean they're just making a big pile. That's all they're doing right now, so, but if, you know, I, I, I'm envisioning if you're gonna, and of course, these, I'm sorry, folks, but you're not in the village, okay, but, um, but we're gonna annex a property and then we're gonna go in there, we're gonna build up a hill across the street from some other people that live there, is that what we're doing? Well, no, sir, no, we don't know that for sure yet.
Well, the pond will be what's directly across from them, but it sounds like there's, there's, the stormwater, yeah, the stormwater, so it sounds like there's a, there's quite a great difference between where those lots will be and where the.
Yeah, so, so the, based, based on my memory, the, the end of that cul-de-sac compared to Harding Street is about, is probably a ten-foot differential and all said and done, from the street level of the end of the cul-de-sac and the street level of Harding. Just to give you a sense of.
I'm sorry, over what kind of distance, without scaling it out right now?
Uh, I think that's, um, almost two hundred feet.
At the end of the day, if we go and, you see your lots, blow it up a little more, just so you can see what, lot number eighty-two, eighty-one, um, yeah, eighty-one, eighty-two, what elevation will the back of those lots be in comparison to Harding?
Well, okay, so just as a comparison, the roadway here, elevation's at nine sixty-six. Um, this is out of the stormwater plan, um, the front of those lots will be nine seventy-six, that's only ten feet higher. And the back of the lot's gonna be at the same elevation as the roadway there.
That's, I just saw that, as you were doing, I saw it, so, okay.
I, I would assume the grading plan in your latest edition of the stormwater management plan is pretty close to where you are. But you see, I mean, it's obviously all going uphill here, but this is a good, good example on, on showing that, you know, those, so there's a storm sewer culvert that comes across, right here is existing. And see this, um, just for the residents that are here, this right here is depicting that swale or that ditch that comes and directs water here, around here, eventually into three large culverts right here, and then out towards the golf course right there. And if you look here, this shows the existing topography and shows that this is all kind of a bowl right back here. So I'm, I'm assuming that when you get a pretty good rain, this floods everything I'm kind of circling right now. Does that seem about right? Okay, good. Um, and so with the grading that they'll be doing, um, here, you can see, this is a better depiction too, showing this, this swale as it goes around and then out through those culverts.
And this is, what you're showing us is something that has been, it's shown to, uh, I've never seen that.
This is the storm.
This is the stormwater management plan.
And where is it? Why don't we have it?
It wasn't.
Cause it's not done yet, not finished yet. Okay, that was the plan. Sorry to be snotty. That, that's, that's the reason I asked the question, because it's not finished yet and that's why we have these questions.
Stormwater management plans?
We have in the plaits, the plat level, um, stuff, but.
Well, I'll tell you what, are we ready to, to close the public hearing? Okay, let's, let's close the public hearing, continue on to, uh, discussion, possible action. And then we can ask you fellows and the folks in the audience if we have any questions. We can still do that. So we'll move on. It says, consideration, uh, consideration of possible recommendation of Village Board for a zoning map amendment for this parcel, which is Autumn Ridge, Phase 3. Does anybody have any issues with the zoning request?
I don't.
I mean, is it something we wanna wait on or you wanna, the zoning, again, is just zoning. It has nothing to do with, uh, plat approval has nothing to do with anything else, right?
Just zoning, right, and this is, this can't go to the Village Board. We can't zone lands that are outside of our boundary, so if the annexation petition or the annexation ordinance gets delayed for any reason, this will kinda follow that timeline. Um, will not be adopted until after annexation.
At that point, then I, why are we even entertaining the, the?
Just so it's ready to go when, when the annexation is.
When we have all the information and we go ahead and approve that.
And they wouldn't wanna plat two family lots if they didn't have the zoning to go along with it, so probably makes sense to give them the zoning to match the plat.
Up to you guys if you wanna.
Solution. Let's have a solution.
I don't like this. Again, I'm gonna go back to we're putting the cart before the horse. Figure it out and come back to us with the details. I, I think we should table this. Sounds like we can't deny it.
Uh, the final plat is the one that we can't deny as long as they're meeting our requirements, so that would be the next agenda item. But again, we don't have the final version of that in the packet, so I think that one would make sense to table.
It'd be appropriate because it'd also be not correct for us to do it here in, in, in the public, you know, we're making, let's, let's do this the right way.
So if you guys wanna keep the items together and, and move it to the October, um, it would be the October 5th meeting. Um, that's certainly an option.
Got consensus? We got a consensus on that? We don't need a motion for that, right?
Well, it's a public hearing. That's why I'm wondering if you maybe, I, I think usually with public hearings, don't you have to, I'm just trying to remember what Matt told us the other, I think you've had to table it to a specific date.
Yeah, I think we do, and then we do need a motion.
Then you would do, you'd need a motion.
That way it's still in that process.
So we need a motion to, um, to table, uh, Item 7A and 7B until the October 5th Plant Commission meeting, 2023.
So moved.
We have a motion, I have a motion, you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Thanks, fellas. Sorry to put you through it all, but let's do it right.
Are you gonna act on, on B or is that?
It was for.
That was, that was, that was a motion for 7A and 7B.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Now, folks in the audience, there would not be another public hearing, but you're certainly welcome to go back and watch. October 5th, 6:30 AM, uh, PM, yes. Certainly.
Yep.
Absolutely.
How about we have the meeting wherever you.
Yeah, where are you going?
Good thinking.
They're going to North Korea.
Bristol, England, I was over there, I was, I was in England last year.
Works better than this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks, for being patient.
I'll make sure it's in the packet. I can get you my contact info.
Alright.
Alright.
How you doing, Ken? Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move on. That's good. We're gonna move on to, uh, 7C. And that is review and possible recommendation, a pro, review and possible approval of SIP plan for duplex at Lot 2, Oregon Parks Duplex Replat applicant is, oh boy, Altera Homes. Are they here? Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Okay.
You can come on up.
You can come up and just tell us what you're trying to do so we understand, although we have everything here, but just give us your name and your address and what you wanna do.
I'm Sherry and I and Altera are the co-owner of the lot, so as a wet development, so what we're trying to do is just to, uh, put the duplexes there that are more like entry-level, um, homes for, um, starter families. And I believe we do include a floor plan and a landscaping plan. So it's gonna be, um, nicely customized to build by Altera. They've built a lot of homes in Oregon and has been very desirable, so it's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathroom, about, um, 1,800 square foot. And that, that lot was zoned for, um, the duplexes. And we have approached before, I believe, to do a four units, but then we just, you know, cut it back for the duplexes just because of some restrictions on our building envelope.
So. I gotta remember my glasses next time.
Is this kinda the typical sort of?
Yep, yep. These, all these in this area, we've seen them, I think, the last two meetings, but yeah, there was a GDP, so this is just verifying they meet all of the setback requirements, uh, laid forth by the GDP, which they do. And then, um, you know, get to, get a chance to see some materials and, um, the landscaping plan. But yeah, no concerns on my end here.
Anybody have any questions? Sounds pretty simple. Let's have a motion to approve the SIP plan for the duplex at Lot Number 2, Oregon Parks Duplex Replat applicant is Altera Homes.
Make the motion to also include the proposed flexibilities identified by the planner. Single finding presented by, and the recommended findings for the specific implementation plan in her recommendation.
Recommendation dated, uh, August 31st, 2023.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look, good luck with your project.
Yeah, and then it's just the next, next one's the same.
The next one is Item 7D, review and possible approval of the SIP plan. Okay, same thing for, uh, Lot 4. Same issue.
Yep, identical duplexes here, I think just different color.
We'll have a, uh, somebody wanna make a motion, the same, the same motion, except changing it from Lot 2 to Lot 4.
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Thank you all. Uh, Item 7E, review and possible recommendation of Village Board for a certified survey map, uh, at 885 Market Street. Let's see. Anybody here for that? Do you wanna have any comments to us or anything? Okay. Lee, any comments?
Uh, this is a split of property, Slade Market Street and Braun. Um, believe the long-term plan is to do some self-storage units here on Lot 1, um, along the railroad. But obviously, that'll be a separate site plan review and, and all of that at a later time. But the stormwater pond at the south end here, I believe, does serve the whole property, but we'll have to look at that when the development for the self-storage or whatever is proposed over there comes forward. Just looking at the impervious surface and any grading, uh, but at this point, it would just be a lot division. I did just get today, um, the comment letter from our engineer from the survey team and the changes suggested were all, um, either typos or labeling of page numbers. So no substantial, um, changes to the CSM. So just ask that they get that cleaned up and, um, get that new version to me before it goes to the Village Board.
Okay, anybody have any issues with that?
Another question I've got is that detention pond, while it's just a simple lot division, we may wanna have some verbiage that describes how much of that pond is for this development? Or just something, because I understand that the same owner's gonna own these, both pieces of property. I understand that the pond can be moved. But that's not to say that the lots can't be divided and there probably should be some description to that.
They are being divided.
I know. But I mean, it could be sold to different people down the road.
Yeah.
So I think that it's just in your best interest to sort of get some description of that.
Maintenance agreement.
Yeah, I, I, hopefully, I, I would say that, I know that the pond is not adequate for the amount of impervious area that would be proposed for like a storage unit type of thing, I believe. There's, we don't have a lot of information. I know I looked into this maybe six years ago. We don't have a lot of information on that pond. So we would put them through a pretty good stormwater review. What would probably occur is a, and, and this is, you know, I would agree with you completely, some sort of shared maintenance agreement. Um, this would be a private pond, because it's not gonna be an outlot, um, but a shared maintenance agreement that would probably improve this pond and allow it to be able to handle both everything on Lot 2 and Lot 1.
And would this be the mechanism to make that happen, or would it be when they come in for a plan review on the new property?
Well, it seems like if we don't have a lot of documentation on the pond, does it exist and understand that it's probably gonna change with the future plan? I think, I mean, nothing's gonna get built there without going through planning commission, so I think we'll just
We have that up.
Make a note and make sure to communicate that to the owner, that that'll be a requirement.
Yeah, you don't have any problem proceeding at this point. It's, it seems like we got a lot of things flying up in the air again here, and yeah, you know how I feel about those. Alright, this one we'll be okay with. Need a motion to, uh, recommendation of Village Board to approve the certified survey map for, uh, 885 Market Street with all the contingencies listed in a memorandum. Anything else?
So moved.
Okay, so moved, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Item, uh, 7F, extraterritorial jurisdiction certified, certified survey map, Jensen Property, Town of Oregon.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really just here for, uh, questions, uh, if, if the board has any. It's good to see, uh, old friends again, Phil and Doc Mar and, and Greg. We've spent a lot of time across.
Yeah, we have.
Across the table from each other. So it's good to see you. And if you have any questions on, uh, my certified survey map, I'm here to answer.
Typically, we don't take a position on it. Typically, what our, our motions will be that we don't have any objection to it, and, and the reason being is it's outside the village and it's not really, this one would affect us anything.
No, it looked to me like you're really just kinda rearranging, you're, you're rearranging the lots that you had to kinda move them away from, so that town park area, moving them up to the end of, what is it?
Windmill Road.
Yeah, that, that road up there to be able to create a few, because you're not doing any additional splits. I don't think you're allowed any more splits that I'm aware of. And so it was really just, we looked at it as kind of a shuffling and a reorganization of it. That's why we didn't have any kinda comment.
Yeah, we typically just roll review these to make sure there's any future right-of-way for the roads noted properly, um, and that there's no kinda zoning changes that would impact the village in a negative way or future plan. So no concerns on our end of this.
So we can have a motion.
Thank you for sitting.
Motion that, uh, we have no objection to the.
So moved.
Yeah, a motion with a second. You have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks for stopping down. You have set there for the whole thing.
Lee is a, a, a new friend.
Nice to put a base to a name.
Nice seeing you, Jerry. Okay, Item, um, 7G. Review Draft 2 of the 24, 2033, my God, Comprehensive Plan.
Alright. Sonya, I'm gonna have to sign you to that here. Go, you, you go ahead and plug in. I'll just, I'll get you up here on.
I will not be on the Plant Commission in 2033. I'm hoping to be alive, but. Okay, ma'am. Yeah, okay.
Good evening. Uh, Sonya Crezel, Planning Consultant with Vandewell and Associates. Good to see you all again. Um, we're here to look at Draft 2 of the Comprehensive Plan update. And we were here just a month ago, uh, looking at Draft 1. So I have some slides to facilitate the discussion. They're very, very brief and very high level, um, just to give us something to look at and remind us of what we talked about last month. The slides mirror the brief PDF on, uh, summary that was included in your packet with the plan as well. Uh, just a reminder of where we are schedule-wise. Uh, we're in that summer section, um, here reviewing Draft 2. At the end, I'll summarize next steps, but just a preview, uh, coming up next is, of course, creation of Draft Number 3. Um, there will be a little bit of a Village Board preview, um, of that document at the September 18th meeting. Uh, and then we're going to be looking at a joint meeting of the Plan Commission and the Village Board, um, likely October 5th. And the purpose of that meeting will to, will be, uh, one more, uh, sort of review, a, a good chance for the Village Board to look at it before the final draft goes to the public open house. The public open house is the, uh, opportunity for people who have provided input throughout this process to come back and say, does the plan reflect what we talked about? To provide final feedback, ask questions and see what's proposed before we move into the adoption phase. So that open house is planned for the end of October and we're working on a exact date for that that will be announced later. Really high level, this is just one slide summarizing what we talked about in August, a reminder of some of the highlights that we hit at that meeting. We talked about population projections, household projections, the land use demand. We summarized the public feedback that was received and how we started to address that public feedback in the plan. We also talked about main changes to the plan, like the formatting, the document orientation. And we touched on some of the bigger policy questions. Uh, those are listed there. We can go through those again if we wanna continue talking about them. Um, but again, this slide is just a reminder of what we covered. Draft 2, again, just one slide here to summarize some of the main changes. Some of the things that we talked about for the map updates, uh, we went through the existing land use mapped, map and used building permit data to make sure that that was updated to show, um, any single-family lots that changed from vacant to single-family. Um, and we'll probably do one more check on that before the plan is finalized, just to make sure that's as accurate as possible. The community character map was updated to reflect your newly adopted tid number 6, so that's up to date as well. We had a discrepancy on the future land use map for the interchange mixed-use land use color. That was corrected, a minor change there. We also made some changes with the heat island map, so, uh, we can bring that up if we need to, but there was some discussion on that at the last meeting. Um, this is in the appendix and it was included to, uh, provide some conversation and context around climate change conversation, uh, and pieces in the plan that touch on that issue. And the map shows different colors, um, showing how those spots in the Village of Oregon compare to the community as a whole. So what results are some darker spots, which are basically heat islands. And it makes a lot of sense for the most part. Uh, for example, at the high school, there's a, a big flat roof surface and there's a lot of impervious surface. So that's shown as one of the hotter spots of your community relative to the rest of the village. Um, the purpose of this is again to just have that conversation around climate change and how it's impacting you very locally. That increased heat in that area could be an indicator of how we're planning for, looking at development for more vulnerable populations, whether that's senior housing or, or children, et cetera. Um, but it's very high-level data. So like I said, it makes sense in a lot of spots like that high school example, but there were hotspots in places like the vacant Mary Hill subdivision area where Veridian is proposed and also along Alpine, uh, Parkway, where the park is. Uh, we looked into the metadata for this and reviewed, um, the Esri data and we've basically have no specific conclusion why those two points are very, are shown in that very dark color for hot. I have some more sort of information from Esri. They did. I have some more sort of information from Esri. They did a statistical sample of communities and found that the data is ninety-eight percent accurate. Um, but also had a disclaimer in there that communities might find, um, errors locally. We, we haven't been able to find anything that explains those two hotspots. So I think what it means for you all and inclusion of this document in the plan, um, is that this is high level and it's in the appendix and it has some conversation around a very important issue that the public and the community has identified for conversation, but that it wouldn't be used to guide any specific policy decisions or any specific site plan approvals. So we can talk about that more if we need to. Interrupt me at any time.
I guess the only thing I would recommend on that is because of that information, is I would put a disclaimer on that sheet in the appendix.
Good idea.
If there's no explanation for it, just make, if there's no explanation for it. What are we using it for? It's just there?
Nothing, but somebody, somebody could hang their, hang a hat on it or something for some issue down the road.
Sonya, I'm curiously, I, my first reaction was, while those aren't developed areas, they're areas that don't have a lot of tree cover and that like farm fields or areas that are even just large, like prairie or, you know, Alpine, the West Side Park area that was mostly farmed, um, is still farmed, a lot of it. So wondering if that still has an effect, but it's interesting that they're showing like up as hot as they are, it's almost looks kind of like over by the high school.
Yeah.
You said.
Well, I can understand high school, well.
Right.
So what time, which is, what particular time of year these readings are taken? Is it taken at night during the day? Uh, when, when do you establish, what is the criteria to determine?
Is it just relevant to ambient temperature, like even whether it's November, July, it's?
I know that's listed in the metadata. I was re- reviewing it earlier today, but I don't recall exactly what it said. Um, I think your hypothesis is a really good one, though, Elise. Um, is if you look at the rest of the community, most of those corridors are tree lined and that might help.
Right, or like the Alpine Meadows neighborhood that's, this was all built before we had our, you know, street tree requirements. And so there's not a lot of large trees in this neighborhood versus, um, like Autumn Woods, looks a lot cooler.
I probably won't go back and read the entire thing.
Yeah, just one sheet in there. But yeah, I think having kind of a disclaimer maybe on the map itself would be helpful.
Not to spend too much time on it, but there was also a very hot spot shown, uh, north of the village boundary in the city of Fitchburg. And we think that can be explained by the fact that it jumped the community boundary and the way that the data, uh, shows up. It's supposed to be relative to your community. So that's probably, we're just going to screen out Fitchburg, so it won't be an issue. Yeah, it's not there. Um, okay, so there's also some oddities with the list of, uh, the village's largest employers. We went back through the Department of Workforce Development data, uh, where this information is posted. And we have that link, you know, Elise has it and we can share it with anyone else that's interested. But their data on the bottom of their page says it's updated regularly. And they get it from a, a third party national company based in Omaha, Nebraska. So I think the issue here, um, we updated it and double checked for what they have. There were a couple of changes. Uh, Bill's Foods was updated, for example, to Hy-Vee, um, Omni Technologies was added, um, omitted by error. I think that one's lower on the list in terms of size. But the commission asked about TICI and Lycon and.
Tracti.
Tracti, thank you. Um, TICI did not show up on DWD's list and neither did Lycon. And we went back into another tab and searched that specifically, um, and those two entities showed up, but not with their Oregon location listed. So Lycon showed Lake Geneva and Sussex and TICI showed up in Madison. Um, so I think our proposed solution is to work just locally and edit the source, um, to show DWD and Village of Oregon and and work with the Chamber or those companies directly. We just want to make sure that they're not omitted when they're clearly a large and long term employee in the community. There's some good discussion and and requests to add tree canopy goals into the plan. So we specifically added that as an action item, uh, to pursue, for example, Tree City USA. Um, some information on Tree City USA was also added to the Natural Resources Chapter. It's an Arbor Day program that can help the village identify goals, um, related to tree canopy and to enumerate the benefits of that type of thing for the public. There was also a specific request to look more specifically at multimodal connectivity regionally. So what this means is bike trails connected from, from the village to Fitchburg or Madison, I think specifically. And we did hear that from the public as well. So I think that was a really good comment to make sure that that was addressed clearly. Going back through the document and reviewing that, I think we had a lot of vague, um, references that talked about that and encouraged that. But to be more specific, there was a policy added in the Transportation Chapter that encouraged working with Fitchburg to connect to the, uh, trail there, there. Is that the Badger State Trail?
Yep.
Um, so that was specifically referenced, um, just to provide some support for ongoing efforts related to that connection. We also made a change to the two land use categories, low scale and mid scale. These are both residential categories. Low scale, um, incorporates all of your single family zoning districts and two family as well. And then mid scale catches that two family, multi-family, and then would also incorporate any new multi-family districts that you might approve in the future. In the last draft, this wasn't specifically discussed here at the commission, but I just wanted to point out that the change was made, um, after discussing it internally, um, at Vandewall and with staff. We removed the single family zoning districts from the mid scale category. This just has the effect of further differentiating between these two categories. We didn't want a situation where someone would bring forward a request to rezone to single family and the future land use map showed mid scale when clearly the mid scale category is intending to provide this higher density buffer, um, or something different than than low scale. I can explain that further if needed, since we didn't talk about it last time, but just wanted to make you aware of that. TND is traditional neighborhood design. Um, last month, it was noted that this is listed a lot in the plan. I think there was some question about defining it. Um, there are a lot of examples of what traditional neighborhood design is, and that's enumerated with bullet points. But what we did is add a graphic that helps explain that a little further. So that's in the plan now. Um, and then throughout the document, there were a good number of edits still needed. Those lived primarily in the appendix and it was information about, um, kind of inventory of the village's, you know, utility situation or employees and things like that. So a lot of details were updated in the appendix. Um, we should, at this point, open it up to questions, further comments. I know I got a list of, um, some more potential edits, um, and started breezing through those. Those were good. But in terms of next steps, again, I'll highlight, this is draft two review by the Plan Commission. If there are any other big picture policy questions you want to discuss, things that are omitted, that you want to make sure are added, now's the best time to make sure that those are, um, shared with us. You can also follow up after the meeting. But we're moving into that draft three. And after that, the turnaround will be fairly quick to stay on schedule with that October, um, public open house. Uh, any typos or sort of language changes, we have time to make those too, but we'll do a thorough review of that as we move into draft three. And then I'll also add that by the time you see draft three, it will have, um, a lot of new graphics added. So that's where the sort of fancier things will come in of the cover page and the divider pages and kind of a document theme. And you'll also have a vision summary graphic, which was included in the scope of work for this project. And that's a nice one pager sort of poster thing that summarizes the whole plan. And you can post that at Village Hall or on the Village website in the future.
Just open it to you guys for any further comments. Um, I know Patrick sent me a, a whole Dropbox link.
Pages tonight, not five like last time.
Yeah, thanks for saying that ahead of time.
Your school wasn't on, so you had more time.
No, I did read the majority of your plan with the exception of I s- kind of scanned the appendix. I did send you through Elise, um, my, my markups, but I also want to explain some of, some of them, so we make sure we're on the same page. Uh, thank you for incorporating the feedback from last month. Um, the call out boxes make the plan more appealing to read. Um, so good, good job on that. Whereas last time I kind of took a twenty thousand foot level, this time I was kind of down in the weeds and I have some issues with the language. Uh, and I'm going to give you some examples and I'll, I'll cite the page that it's on if you want to bring it up. It's not critical at this point. But on page thirty, there's a policy, uh, policy for this that starts out, consider updating the downtown master plan. That is not a policy, that is a recommendation. So that word consider, I think, is the wrong word. If it said the policy was to update the downtown master plan, it should start with an act- action verb, right? Uh, so I would ask that you look through that, uh, and I think I've identified them in what, what I sent you and consider that language. Okay. Page twenty nine, require traditional neighborhood design principles. When I hear the word require.
What page are you on, Patrick?
Page twenty nine of the plan.
Okay, I was just, uh, okay.
Page twenty nine, planned neighborhood policy number one.
Got it, okay.
All right, when I see require, I get nervous. And with respect to traditional neighborhood design, um, I don't think we should be requiring that. Uh, I think we should be promoting that. Encouraging is a good word. Uh, and along that line, reading through the plan, there are a number of instances where you refer to traditional neighborhood design, but it says, um, let me get here. Traditional design principles are recommended on page thirty six. On page fifty one, it says, apply traditional design principles. Uh, and another page fifty four, it says promote. So there's no consistency there. And as I said, personally, I don't object to traditional neighborhood designs. There's great ideas, but I don't. When you, when you talk about something purely, I get nerv- nervous when you make a statement like that. So I think, look at that language.
Yep.
Uh, number one, it should be consistent. What is the position of the village? But as a developer, I, if I read that require, it means my whole development has to be in accordance with that. So I, I, I concerned about that. Uh, page thirty one, there is a reference to signage, item six in planned mixed use. Okay, and it says, require high quality signage that is not excessive in height or total square footage. And my comment is, that seems pretty vague. We have a sign ordinance, so why not reword that to say, require high quality signage that complies with the village's sign ordinance? Okay, I don't know if that's appropriate language for this type of document, but that's my feedback on it.
Take a look at it.
Okay. Uh, last item on language, page thirty one. Policy number one. I believe it's the second box. So interchange mixed use. A detailed area plan is recommended for this land use. Again, recommended is not policy language. That's a recommendation. Okay, so I think you need to look at, look at that. All right, so those are my comments on language and you have the markups. There's additional stuff for you to consider, okay? Then I want to get to some issues of concern. Page sixty six, Jeff, I'll give you a chance to get there and I'm going to get there too. Um, this is with regard to inter, chapter eleven, intergovernmental cooperation.
Sixty six?
Sixty six is on the, what I'm showing.
And what part?
Okay, hold on, give me a second. Item number six. So it's right at the top of that page, okay? And, and the concern I have is the last sentence in six, only extend public utilities and services to lands that have been annexed into the Village of Oregon. And my comment is, do we really want to close the door on a partnership with neighboring communities? Uh, and does this not contradict intergovernmental relations? So in other words, and and Greg knows the history and you guys know the, I guess, the politics of dealing with Fitchburg, but.
Sure do.
Come into town and you've got a tremendous amount of land there. And boy, if we could play nicely and Oregon could benefit. So I, I'm nervous about that statement. I, I don't think it should be included in this document.
And also like the example we were just looking at with Autumn Ridge, right? Those are utilities that, if that moves forward, phase five isn't in the village yet, so that would probably go against them a bar.
We, we tried, you know, I was, God, how many years ago I was on that committee that, that we worked with Fitchburg for a couple of years? And it was just basically a. Thank you.
Almost there and then there was an election.
Well, yeah, you're right. There, there was election in there too, yeah, but.
I get it, but.
There was, it was, it was, it was not going to happen. It just simply was not going to happen. And, and yeah, they'd love to.
I just don't want to close the door to the future. And I think that statement says, hey, we're not going to extend.
Especially now that it's owned by the school district.
Well, one side of the street.
One side of the street, but you're extending sewer out there.
Yeah.
For the school district. You have a potential to take some advantage and there's a win win.
No, there isn't. Trust me. Never say never, Ray. Never say never. I understand that, but, uh, the door, we didn't close the door. Let's put it that way.
No.
Okay?
I, I know there's a history there, but I think by.
This is being recorded, so we're, that's, I'm not going any further.
I just think we're, we're closing the door with that statement and it shouldn't be in there.
Well, after what we went through, like, that's fine with me.
I think that's fair. I think that there needs to be some verbiage in there to leave the door open.
Yeah, all right. Bear with me. I've got, I think, four more comments. Okay, uh, page seventy. Um, up at the top, add alternative energy production. The last sentence there, allow accessory land uses of this type in all zoning districts. That makes me nervous. Um, does that allow somebody to put a wind turbine up in my backyard that's neighboring me? So I'm all for green energy, but I, I don't know what that sentence could imply.
So would this be a, a point where you'd be in favor of language, like, consider allowing? It's, it's an action item list and not a policy?
Possibly.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not sure for like wind turbines, if we actually have that as an allowed accessory use. Anywhere in the.
Okay, well.
It's probably a, a text amendment that has to kind of, there'll be a series of text amendments I see like matching up with now some of this language.
Yeah, look at that first sentence, add alternative production such as solar and wind. And that's right away when I said, ooh, are we getting into some dangerous territory here?
Right, yeah.
I also know that solar farms have started to come under fire because of their proximity to some residential developments. And because of the reflectivity of those solar arrays. With the improved technology that they continue to have, that's not to say that you cannot increase the productivity of one of those solar arrays to the point where somebody buys a lot in this, in a subdivision and puts in a micro solar farm. Hypothetically, again, who knows?
Solar panels?
Yeah, yeah.
Hundred, hundred tiny little solar panels in there?
Yeah, very tiny ones. But the, the point is, is I, maybe, maybe the, the thing is to encourage the use of, instead of saying that it should be allowed, it should be just encourage the use of. And that would be enough.
And a comprehensive plan should be broad. So this isn't the place where we want to touch on issues like reflectivity or where, you know, what size is the wind turbine in a backyard? That's something that you want the zoning code to do. They're absolutely valid points. And as a whole, if it's not something that elevates it to the issue of including in the plan, fine, but we can soften the language to address the concern.
I like, I like courage, potentialism.
Or yeah, like I could see just eliminating that second sentence. Or something, or just explore, you know, appropriate districts where these uses can occur. And then that will be more of a ETA level discussion.
Okay, next item, page, bottom page seventy one. In that call out box or that purple, whatever you want to call it, there's a question there. Does the village want to be purchasing land ourselves? And my question is, do you, do you intend to keep this question in the final draft? Or are you looking for feedback, um, to gauge whether or not to include this as a policy statement? Was that the intention?
I think that was through our sort of. I think that was through our sort of iterations with staff. A comment that was accepted with track changes that should of course be deleted. Any, any village-led purchases would of course be discussed at length. So this wouldn't require you to, to lead that sort of proactive effort.
Right, and, and I guess my personal opinion is I wouldn't wanna say, no, the village will never purchase land again. We've had some challenges in doing that, but who knows what the future holds, right? All right, so I just wanted to check on that.
Okay.
All right, two items, going to the appendix, this is page thirty-three in the appendix. Uh, let's see. Okay, there's a graphic there, right, some, yep. And if you go over to the right side, there's a two thousand to twenty-two, second column from the right. Those percentages do not seem correct. I think that's an Excel issue. They seem like way out of line. Right, if you look at two thousand ten to two thousand twenty, okay, uh, a doubling of the values.
Looks like a decimal issue.
It, it looks like some, uh, yeah, there's a formula issue, so mark that, and it's in my markup I sent you, but review that. All right, last item, uh, page thirty-nine of the appendix. Uh, okay, the statement about, the top, top of the page, the statement about rail. Uh, a rail line runs north-south through the village, a line runs north to the city of Madison, south of Lloyd, this line is currently not active. Uh, that doesn't make sense. That line is active, it serves Licon. And I wrote, should it not be mentioned that this line currently serves the industrial park? Right?
Yep, thank you.
Maybe they're looking at the fact that south of here in, that, is that track ever been replaced in Brooklyn? It ends in Brooklyn.
No, I think that when we went through this the last time, that may be a carryover and it was still owned by the village.
Yeah.
As of the last plan, it wasn't active.
I don't know, does it actively serve anybody south of Licon, is that the, the southern user and then they just use some of that rail for like storage of cars?
Yes, they do, yes, they do.
The tracks are upgraded for high, you know, traffic speed or anything, yeah. Guard limit.
That's all I have till we get to chickens. A few things there, but I'll step, step in for a minute.
Anybody else?
I got a couple of things, Patrick went deep in the weeds on the, the verbiage, I, I just looked at the pictures this time. Page fifty-six in, in the main document is your graphic on traditional neighborhood design, which I kinda requested you give a little more definition and picture's worth a thousand or more words and we got pictures in there, great. Interesting part is the picture in the center of some street cross-sections, which are part of traditional neighborhood design, but are not part of our, I don't know if it's in the land development ordinance or, or where we get to that, but I know we've had some discussion of some of these in the past, but, uh, village ordinance hasn't allowed some, something that looks quite like that. So if we're gonna put it in the comp plan, show a picture of it, maybe the ordinance needs to be next.
Yep, that's why we've got kinda short, mid, long-term zoning text amendments, so that'll, that's in the list.
And then, I don't know what page it's on, I'm gonna have to wheel through it, the future land use map.
I think it's, yeah, one ninety-three of the packet, it's not.
There's a couple of versions, one, one goes further and one's the village, village extent, I guess was the one I was looking at. Um, so I just kinda was looking at this, saying, you know, what is, what potentially will somebody maybe wanna come in or look at doing? One area is on Netherwood, um, just to the west of Cusick Parkway on the north side of Netherwood. We're showing, I think the yellow with the dots is planned neighborhood. And I was wondering if that should maybe not be the, I don't know, the planned mixed use type neighborhoods? Do we want houses along there or since that's already sort of a commercial corridor? If, if that ever developed along there up to Alpine Parkway, say, you know, should that be more of a commercial, uh, look and feel there with business instead of potentially a row of houses along there?
This area right here you're talking about?
Yep, yeah, it's the current Alpine da- dairy, uh, land, and that's also, there's some pretty low land in there, wouldn't be very good for basements, depth of houses and depth sewers and things like that, it might be better, better for commercial type, uh, uses along there and it would continue what we already see on Netherwood, um, to the west of Main Street anyway. So just, just a thought on that, and then, uh, kinda the same comments apply on Union Road. Um, there's a little sliver of, of land between Union and the railroad tracks. Um, we've got some currently developed and then there's a, kind of a little vacant field in there and we're showing planned neighborhood in there as well, and I don't think that, you know, necessarily would continue a, a look of kinda what's been done there already, so whether that little, it should maybe be more of a mixed use as well.
Yeah, I definitely would agree with that area, I think we can kinda go either way on the Netherwood. Um, Alpine Dairy, keep in mind that planned neighborhood is, um, we don't have that pie chart anymore, so it includes all types of housing. So we've talked about like here on CC, we have more dense housing and kind of transition into a single-family neighborhood, so.
I think it allows neighborhood office, I, I went to the, you know, so there is potentially some light business use in there, but fronting Netherwood, it just seemed, seemed more mixed use to me.
Yeah, I think I agree with that, um, I think it's a good opportunity to keep that kind of commercial area connected. Um, if you think fifty years in the future, if there's housing there and, and, you know, tides change and housing isn't a big deal and then commercial is, where else are we gonna put that, that's, you know, in proximity to the existing downtown commercial areas that we have, so I think that's a good, good point to raise.
It's also a, a kind of a logical step down from, you know, the current business park as well, too, to not have housing quite so close to those uses. Okay, my review of the pictures.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Really appreciate the thorough review.
Thank you. Thanks for sitting here waiting all this.
Yeah, no problem.
Do we need to discuss the chicken as part of this?
Well, yeah, I, I can take some of the, the text amendments too, Sonia, if you wanna go and we can follow up later. Okay, thanks. She has a littler baby than I do, so I'll let her get home.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, last time Sonia presented, um, some text amendments, which are kind of on our low-hanging fruit, short-term list, and we went through some of those, um, we actually have sent all these off to, um, Derek and Matt, our attorneys, to review a little bit um, more closely, I know there were some questions about signage and making sure we're not, you know, overstepping our bounds with First Amendment rights and everything. So, um, we don't have a version in front of you in like an ordinance, ordinance-type format that's ready to go to the village board, but there was a couple of things, um, Jeff and I also probably about three weeks ago finally had time to sit down and look through some of the suggested changes and there were, uh, four sections here, I only included the four that we made further changes to. Um, did include all eleven, um, but we can kinda go through, um, one by one, I think there was a couple I just wanted to highlight, yeah, so, um. Okay, so the first one I wanted to talk about was, um, exposed fasteners, uh, this is something I think we've, um, we've been talking about a long time and we've been requiring. And one thing, I think this is actually a misinterpretation on my part, so you can see in, uh, so page two oh three of the packet. Um, section three, standards for all residential office, business and the I zoning districts. So I always interpreted I as industrial, but I is actually institutional, correct, Sonia? On your way, yes, so, so I think the, the, the base question is, if we, we've actually been requiring this of industrial districts, but it hasn't been matching up what is in our code. So, um, if we would like to kind of have those, have our practice meet with in the code, we should amend this to include, um, all of the industri- basically all of the zoning districts. Um, if we wanna have higher architectural requirements for some zoning districts, but for industrial, treat that differently. Um, that's kind of how it is now, but I think we probably do need some more clarification on industrial districts. We've also allowed exposed fasteners on the sides of the buildings that aren't facing a road for recently, but had kind of the, the front-facing sides have concealed fasteners, um. I think a couple of you, I know John specifically has talked about, I think that the technology on the siding has changed since this was, the, the original concern was kinda the rust and the bolts and the streaking. Um, and maybe somebody can do a better job than I can to explain. How do we, what's important now, given what's being built and what change, if any, should we make to this section of the code? Just a little bit more guidance, so I can come back with, uh, any further revisions here. Scott, maybe, maybe you were the one that pulled me aside a couple of weeks ago on this too.
It's related maybe to the setback, you know, how far from, from the public street is it, you know, if you get a building, you know, like Tyce's is now, I mean, you couldn't tell what, whether fasteners were exposed or not. You know, if they expand closer to the street, it would be more visible. Uh, when the village put up their public works addition, you know, they didn't wanna go to the extra cost for the, the, the fasteners that were hidden. It is a extremely large cost to go to that type of panel. When, you know, from thirty, forty feet away, most people are not gonna see that fastener.
Is the streaking still a concern with the materials that are being used now?
Generally speaking, what, what's, what's happened is the panels are still the same. It's just that the finishes that they put on them are a powder-coated finish and they're baked on, and it's either a Kynar or a Highlar finish. And the minimum that you see on them is twenty-five years usually warranty. They can go much higher up to fifty if you get a better finish. So, yeah, and that finish is attached to a galvanized or a Galvalume metal panel, which is sort of like a, um, a piece of metal that has been treated not to rust. So the metal itself has been, is now galvanized and it is put, it's got a better powder-coated finish on it. So that's what's happened. Panels themselves really haven't changed, it's the way that they're manufactured.
Only the finish is.
And the fasteners that they use have a little gasket on them that doesn't allow water to really penetrate past them. So, um, long story short, I don't think that we have to worry as much about fasteners. I think that Scott's suggestion is that, um, and I think the intention of not having exposed fasteners was to have just a building look cheap. But to Scott's point, if we say that no exposed fasteners within thirty feet of a front's, front yard setback or a side yard setback, they could use it on the back of a building, they could use it on the side of a building or.
Pick a number.
You know, thirty feet, twenty feet, um, you know, a parking lot is sixty feet deep. It seems like a fairly reasonable number. If you look across a parking lot, you're never gonna see a fastener, so.
And the bigger the building, the more extreme the cost upgraded. If you're looking at a large employer wanting to build a sizable facility, I mean, it, it could be, you know, millions of dollars more to go to a different technology panel just to avoid fasteners that nobody, you know, nobody would notice from a reasonable length away, so. Definitely, I think, should look at that, and there's other places where you really, you know, upscale business park where you really want the highest quality look and, you know, they have, you know, have that and, and they may have deed restrictions, you know, like Science Park in Madison, you know, where they are very detailed about what they would allow on a, in a development like that anyway.
You know, and the flip side to it is I've seen buildings where they actually celebrate the connections in the fasteners and they use it as a detail. Hypothetically, they've got square panels on a building, but the fasteners are exposed and they're black heads. So you kind of see that. They pop them off, so I mean, it can be done well. But generally speaking, everybody's looking at the most cost-effective way to sort of skin a building. And, um, I think that the setback requirement is the way to go at the discretion of maybe a plan commission, you know, maybe that's a conditional use or maybe that's something that is an alternative flexibility that could be offered if they come in front of the plan commission for approval or something like that.
Okay, everybody generally on board with that, I can explore some language about setbacks and CUPs and run that by the crew. Yeah, I don't know how much you wanna get into the weeds with all the chickens and bee stuff too, if you have comments afterwards. Um, I will just say generally, um, so when Jeff and I kinda went through this, we tried to mention some of the questions we had last time and tried to clear that up, um, we also kinda talked about if we have rental properties or duplexes, um, that have like separate yards that are, you know, all fully fenced in, do we wanna allow that? Um, a lot of people, you know, own their half of duplex, but it might not be, you know, it's not a detached unit, so how we wanna treat that. And then we also kinda went through just, uh, this permit process and we felt like this is probably not something we wanna put under building inspector. He was happy to hear that, so, um, we can kind of talk about what that looks like, if that's something that you guys are fine, you know, leaving at a staff level too, and then kinda how that's maintained, but the bee stuff more or less follows kind of the same process like permit-wise as the chicken stuff. Um, we took a, a lot of the language about a flyway barrier that we felt was very confusing. Um, and just suggesting some language, we can definitely look at more examples there. Um, and I know we talked about beekeeping in more districts, so we added that in too, but happy to hear comments on this.
Yeah, so let me just start with my questions and maybe that'll lead us somewhere. So first question is, why do we need to regulate this?
Because it is happening now and, um, it's completely a gray area. We've got also roosters, um, in the village and people with more than, probably more than a dozen chickens, um, that are impacting neighbors.
And lots of requests for bees too.
Lots of requests for bees, okay. Uh, second question, what is the rationale for prohibiting ducks?
Ducks make a lot of noise.
And they do.
Okay.
Like guineas too, I think we have in there too, right? Guinea hens?
Oh, guinea hens, yeah.
Guinea hens are really noisy, we're trying to, that's why roosters aren't allowed, cause they just, whereas chickens just kinda make little cluck, cluck noises.
Okay.
Can you demonstrate?
I, I could.
Three in the morning.
Really?
Third, third question, how is this going to be administered? So in other words, is it gonna be complaint-based, are you gonna ask anybody that owns chickens to come get a license?
All the above.
Okay.
Well.
We won't, will we be issuing licenses?
We'll be issuing permits and I think what we said is, we didn't feel, because we just know with, we've got some things like the sidewalk cafe permit, other things, street trees that annual basis, it is really difficult for us to maintain and people forget, you know, year-to-year properties change hands. So we felt that, um, there should be a one-time permit. If they're gonna make changes to the location or anything like that, they need to come back and, and have that reviewed. And then if there's any finding that they're violating, so number of chickens or they're not being cared for, the bees don't have water source or whatever it may be, that that permit could be revoked, but this is a difficult thing, just like the dogs and cats, it's hard to tell how many, you know, animals people have because, and, and we're not in people's backyard, so it, it is complaint-driven, but that's kind of, we don't have a dedicated, um, you know, property maintenance.
Changing location of, of chicken coops or something?
No, not the chicken, no more, just if they were gonna. You know, change the size or anything. I think as long as it's in keeping with the regulations, we wouldn't have any. It would just be kind of a one time check and permit to do that.
This gives us something when a neighbor shows up and says, you know, they have twenty-three chickens in their backyard and I've counted them.
Say, oh, they don't have a permit.
Yeah, either they don't have a permit or they have a permit, they have a permit for six. We can then institute an enforcement policy when we do that. But we are not going around trying to count chickens and.
Before they hatch.
Beehives and, and that's the problem. I think most of this, a lot of the stuff that you see in these zoning text amendments, kind of this easier stuff. The stuff that Elise and I over the years have gotten a lot of questions on. And when your ordinances don't say much, you kind of have to fall back on.
Discretion.
Discretion and trying to get people to comply just by being good neighbors. And that's just as hard and harder.
I noticed there was a, I think a max quantity of six chickens. Where, where did that number come from?
I think that's just consistent with what other kind of.
Communities.
Suburban communities have somewhere as low as four.
So you've looked at, you've looked at other models?
Yeah, this is, I think, based off of Middleton's. We felt like six was reasonable.
Okay. Do you have an idea of a proposed fee for that permit?
I think we want to keep it pretty attainable, I mean, maybe twenty-five or forty or something.
Then last question with bees. Well, I guess I wrote, where do these standards originate? So the, specifically to the bee standards. I mean, I know nothing about the, the beekeeping, but I guess my question is, have they been reviewed by a professional beekeeper?
No, that would be a good thing. I'm sure there's some.
So I'll get your, her contact and I think she'd be amenable. Cause I just don't know if we're picking numbers out of.
Yeah, again, I think this is language from Milton. I haven't actually, I don't know if this was adopted into their code or not, but it doesn't look like they have a permit that's available online that I could find. I haven't done more digging. I know the planner over there. So I have a, need to put an email into her to figure out if they made further changes or whatnot. But I know, yeah, some of the language about water and things like that. And like in this flyway barrier, what they had originally suggested, it was like two legs of a triangle extending from an apex. We're like, we can't understand what that means. We can't expect other people, so that needs to be clear and, and probably have some kind of diagram. That shows here's an example of what you should include in your site plan and.
Yeah, my, my big concern is that we're just not making arbitrary decisions that, you know, if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your contact.
Yeah, I will send you that tomorrow.
One area on that that I've been aware of over the years with poultry is a lot of attraction to rodents coming in. If you, if your storage of feed materials and, and manure. The piling, you've got to make sure it's containerized and that it's not going to smell good for neighborhood rats.
Okay, and one question, with this language, will there be a public comment period or how do we?
Yeah, so when we get to a point that we feel comfortable with this language, it'll come back before you as a kind of draft ordinance. And that'll be the final check for, I can take the HDMI, Jeff. And then I'll go to the board and then we'll have a public hearing.
So is this separate from comprehensive plan or is this going to be?
Nope, totally separate.
Give me a rough idea when you think that this will be.
I think, you know, it kind of depends on how much more we'll look at this. I, I do want to keep the board relatively up to speed, but I don't want to send this to the board if we're still talking about some of this high level, you know, numbers and stuff. So probably wait till we get to more of a final draft to get to the board, but I'm hoping by the end of the year we can get these adopted.
Yeah, apparently there are more chicken owners than I've realized in the village.
Quite, I can think of probably at least ten or a dozen different properties.
Like about a dozen. Okay. That's when you're talking with chicken people, you're talking dozens.
So many chicken pens out there.
Any other public information?
Yeah, I think the fence stuff, we just changed to kind of match what we talked about last time with. Corner properties, having the setback meet the height of the fence. If you guys are still okay with that, we'll, we'll kind of massage that language with the lawyers and make sure that's all clear and.
Yeah, I had one comment on the fence. Shouldn't there be verbiage about the vision triangle?
I think that's somewhere else in the.
We have that in the vision triangle, yeah.
So it doesn't need to be here?
No, it wouldn't hurt to have it in there though for a corner property. I mean, we're not going to allow something in the front yard setback anyway. So there's still a thirty foot front yard setback regardless of if you're on a corner or not, so.
Well, you could have a, a two foot, two or three foot tall fence. Yeah, into, in the front yard, but that would not cause a problem with the vision triangle.
Just for the what if, it might be just good to put.
Yeah, and there's a little diagram somewhere else in the code, so we could maybe have that in two locations. I think that was, that was it for the text amendments. But we'll look into a couple of those other things, do a little bit more checking with other communities and come back with another draft in October.
I noticed you left under the pavement setback, you went from five to three. Against my.
Yeah, oh yeah, Jeff and I did talk about that. I know you guys kind of mentioned.
And I would like to see if, if you do that and, and it's existing two houses that are, you know. So many feet apart and then they both want to put a slab in there, you know, between them and somebody's going to be dumping water in somebody's window well in a hurry, so.
Well, yeah, that is the single most complaint. And in the eight years I've been here and for five or four, yeah, four and a half of those as zoning administrator. Always, it was, and, and that's the problem, these houses are being put tighter. And there's been a lot of people adding slabs and, and every time, we've actually made, we made someone go in and cut. It, it kind of where they were a little cart before the horse and.
Dammed up drainage and.
No, no, they, they poured the concrete and, and their neighbor complained and we had to go out and locate the property line. We snapped a, a line five feet in and, and made sure they cut it.
This, this will create a lot of headaches because adding that a couple of feet will allow a lot of these slabs to go in. And I'm, I'm worried more about drainage.
Yeah, we'd still have four feet of drainage, which I know is not a lot.
Yeah, but depending on where, where the neighbors, you know, contours are. And then if, if your slab dams up the drainage and, you know, then sheet flows water right into the neighbor's window well or something. You'll be getting the call, Jeff.
Yeah, so I was actually at a house last week and the person was complaining that their neighbor, this was had nothing to do with a slab. They were complaining about their neighbor shooting water at their house, okay? And I went out there and I looked at it online on our, using contours and it says, everything on this shows that the water is graded or the land is graded to your house. And, and I went out there and looked at it and met with them. And, you know, it, it was a grading issue, but it was a grading issue having to do with the other house, you know, their, their house. In other words, you know this, you still have to grade away from your house and a great, away from your window wells if you don't want water to go towards your house. So, and they did that. Actually, they, I just noticed the landscapers out there and a whole bunch of soil and sod and, and they did. You know, nice job to fix that.
Yeah, I think we did have a discussion though about maybe we should clean up some language about downspouts and making sure that, you know, if it's, if it's directed, you know, it either needs to be directed towards your backyard or if it's directed towards a side yard, needs to be at least ten feet from the property line or something like that, so.
Lots of places where this will work great and there's going to be a few places that, you know, you'll get.
Yeah, it'll solve some problems and create some other ones, yeah.
Oh, maybe, maybe the ordinance could, you know, mention, you know, allow, you know, subject to drainage or, you know, leave yourself an out in there. Case by case, it could be evaluated to see if it's appropriate.
Right, or if it's a building permit, it's going to have a site plan kind of required as part of that.
You know, the grading's going on, it, it's not that likely to be a problem there. It's the existing houses that now could put that slab in that they couldn't put in before you.
Well, it's also houses that are on a tier. So as they step down the hill, you know. My, my rule of thumb has always been that you can't, or I've always understood that you can't put an excess burden onto your neighbor's property for runoff from yours. So if you've got a roof drain and it's got a downspout, you can't shoot that at your neighbor. Because that's putting an excess burden onto your neighbor's property unless you've got a swale, which the setbacks would require.
Right, right.
But if you've got a house that's on a tier and to your point, Jeff, you grade away, all of that water is running right at your neighbor because he's downhill.
But he should have, he or she should have. Should. And, and that's, and that's really what it comes down to honestly is, is how you're graded next to your house. And, and how, whether you or the person before you or the builder or whatever has done the drainage the way it needs to be. Yeah, changing from five to three feet honestly is probably not going to be a whole. It, it just allows a few more people in the village to be able to put those maintenance pads on and.
Probably the properties that's a problem on now, might not make that much of a difference. But I do agree, like the downspout language, and maybe we just say that paving, paving or, you know, this kind of parking pad requires a building permit even for existing homes. And then that is kind of our checkpoint to.
And, you know, make them think about what they're going to do with the water.
Yeah, let us think about that a little bit too, how that might work.
Last time we talked about this too, there was a question about the flares. And if the proximity of the drive aisle or that pavement to a property line. Sometimes municipalities have flares that are eighteen inches, five feet, three feet.
Right, we, I think we are maintaining the ten feet back that has to flare. It, it can, it can flare at, starting at the sidewalk and flare at forty-five degrees. Didn't we talk about that? Yeah, to, to where.
That'd be five feet. That'd be five feet. If it's going to go ten feet at forty-five degrees, it's going to be five feet.
Yeah, if that's what they want to do. Right now, our, our code says, has to be, has, the setback is at ten feet back from the sidewalk. Okay.
So you can't just have a super wide driveway, but.
Right, so you have to have a strip, but, but we really have, have historically said, you can start at the edge of your driveway and, and flare it back.
I'm not following. So you've got your terrace and that's typically what, six, eight feet? Typically, I was just saying.
That's not in this section, is it? I think that's in driveway requirements. We're going to bring this back anyway for more kind of workshop discussions, so we'll, we'll pull that section out too to discuss. At the next meeting, driveway flares. I'm done with that. I have one note when we get to upcoming meeting dates, but I'm done with the ZTA stuff.
You sure?
Yep, I'm, I'm sure.
Okay, no more, no more public appearances, no more public discussion. Direct, Director of Community Development Report. Upcoming meeting, well, the status of development projects. What's, is there much development, well?
They're moving ahead on Greenview Preserve, phase one.
Yeah, they are.
Moving ahead. Yep, you might have heard that over in your neighborhood.
There's serious iron out there. They're doing what?
They do some blasting for.
A couple of weeks ago.
For the utilities. You feel it?
I'm going to go home and find the crack though that you made.
Uh huh, exactly. I got some up there on my steps. I can show it to you. But, yeah, no, and, and you know, this is that time year where hopefully people are kind of starting to wrap some stuff up.
I, yeah, I, regarding that, for some, why did I think that they were developed, starting to develop on the east end? On the east end of that development by my place. Why, why wouldn't they coming off of?
They would not be coming off of Prairie Parkway.
Nope, it's on, off the end of Mary Hill is phase one.
I just thought, I guess I was, I was thinking they want those row houses or whatever you want to call them.
No, not yet. No, not, that'll be, I think that's either phase two or three.
Alright, okay, good. And we're doing fine on Jamesville Street.
But it's all in the county's hands. It's been in the county's hands. It's, it's going a little slower sometimes, but it's okay. They're, they're doing a nice job.
Looks like it.
You've driven on the first portion, it's really nice and they'll, they're on schedule to be wrapped up. And then state and Washington are being, they're going through the same process right now. And I spoke to Lauren about that the other day. We're still pushing them for schedule a little bit, but.
What is the schedule? What is the final?
Well, we, we want pavement this year.
Well, yeah.
I know, so, but, I mean, we're also in September, so.
Now you got until the middle of November that it ends.
Correct, correct, yeah, no. I haven't been told otherwise that we have to be worried about that. You've seen the concession stand going up?
I actually haven't looked yet.
That's, that's coming up. I think trust, the trusses are going up next week.
Yeah, well, they're up.
And, yeah, it's starting to come together and looking nice, but. What else we've got? And Quick Trip is under construction, you see that?
No, I, well, I shouldn't say that.
The walls of that, I don't know, they must have brought the whole thing in in one. Yeah, we went by and it was a slab and then the next day it was walls up and then trusses up, so.
Is it all, is it, is it wood construction? Okay, so they bring the panels that are already prefabbed and brought in.
Yeah, no, it's looking nice over there and.
So when's the, what, the, the car wash going to be done ready?
Next year, they have to turn it on the existing one first and everything for that.
Okay, planning, then there's nothing else? At least you want to say something about our meetings?
Yes, so Joy and I will start looking at our twenty twenty-four dates. We have four elections, so it might, that might impact. We obviously don't want to conflict with just kind of staff needs during that time. So we might have to move from the first Thursday some month to the second, so stay tuned for that. One thing we wanted to ask you all, I think we brought this up a little while ago. But just as we're planning for the next year, wanted to just address, we've always started at six thirty. I think a lot of that was because, you know, folks were getting home from work, wanted to go home and eat dinner, just wanted to make sure that that's still, that time works for everybody. Obviously, most of our meetings aren't this long, but, you know, it's getting pretty late and just want to see if there's a different time. We're not married to six thirty, but if that works best, everybody, we can leave as is.
Seven years ago.
Five o'clock. Oh, that's the opening bit.
You're not, you're not going to be the winner on that one. I'm retired, so it doesn't matter.
And obviously the public too, we want to make sure that people want to get here for public hearings and stuff. Oh, any strong feelings about six PM, six thirty?
Six or six thirty is fine. I'm not in favor of going any later.
Right, no. And, and can you, Joy, can you kind of take care of this agenda so it doesn't run like this? I'm starting to compete with the, I said, we're trying to, starting to compete with the village board.
I can start a timer.
Really? You can take care of that? Good. Alright, so then we need a motion to adjourn. A second? All the favors, aye. Thanks, everybody's patience. Motion approved and we are adjourned. Thank you.